Staff, may we have the roll call?
Commissioners, Commissioner Adam?
Here.
Commissioner Mandick? Vice Chair Acosta Galván?
Here.
Chair Perkins?
Here.
Commissioner Skandura?
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
Commissioner Ray?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Chair Perkins?
Yes.
Hi. Commissioner Mandick asked me to make a little announcement on her behalf, and I'll repeat this when we're at the 6 o'clock as well. As came up at the last study session, Commissioner Mandick does have a commercial property located within 500 feet of a parcel that's proposed for inclusion in the affordable housing overlay, which is an Item H on the main regular session agenda tonight on the planning, the housing element project. So in the absence of time for a formal FPPC advice letter regarding whether Item H may be segmented or voted on separately from the rest of the items, Commissioner Mandick decided to exercise an abundance of caution and decided to recuse herself from the entire housing element project decision. And so that is the reason that she is absent today.
Okay, thank you for making that announcement. Do we have anyone signed up for study session public comments?
We do have one public comment, Gerald Chapman.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Gerald Chapman, and I'm one of the original owners and residents in, on Edwards Hill for, in the Ellis Golden West Quarter section that you're talking about putting an overlay on, an affordable housing overlay. I would like to have staff answer a few questions for you before your meeting. The first one is that I have questions about whether or not this, the meeting tonight will be a legitimate meeting because we can find no one within the 300-foot distance, notification distance, that received written notification of this meeting. So I don't think it's legal for you to have the meeting tonight because of improper notification. The other issue that I'd like to talk about is the fact that placing this overlay on the Holly, or the Ellis Golden West specific plan at this time seems to be in conflict with what the specific plan says. It says that if you read the first two paragraphs in the specific plan, you'll see that it talks about the equestrian, preserving the equestrian nature of the area, preserving the topography, and preserving the state residential. So it would seem to me that a more logical step would be that you would have to amend that portion of the specific plan before you can place an overlay, changing the type of building that goes on it. The other question that I have that just dawned on me while I was here is Mr. Gates owns a piece of, lives in a piece of property within the Ellis Golden West Quarter section. And I just wonder if perhaps his whole staff should be recused from having, making any comments on this because certainly he has the final say as far as what comes out of his office. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Do we have a presentation?
We do. Alyssa Matthews will be leading the presentation for the study session.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. This evening, we will be discussing the environmental impact report that was prepared for the housing element update. I'm going to try to advance the slide. Okay, the purpose of the study session is to provide an overview of the analysis and conclusions in the program's subsequent environmental impact report that was prepared for the housing element and to answer any questions that you may have pertaining to the environmental impact report. Before we discuss the EIR that was prepared for the project, I'd first like to provide some background on the California Environmental Quality Act, otherwise known as SEQA, which is a statute that requires preparation of environmental documents for projects. The purpose of SEQA is to inform decision makers about significant environmental impacts associated with the project, to identify those, to identify ways those impacts can be avoided or reduced, to prevent impacts through mitigation or alternatives, and to disclose why a project is approved despite having potentially significant environmental impacts. In addition to understanding what SEQA requires, it is equally responsible, it is equally important to understand what it does not require. First, SEQA does not argue for or against a project. It does not tell decision makers what decision to make. It also does not require an exhaustive treatment of issues nor perfection, but should allow for informed decision-making. And finally, it does not require agreement among experts. Now that we have gone over SEQA, we'll discuss the draft program environmental impact report that was prepared for the housing element. So why prepare a program EIR? The IR that was prepared for the project is what's called a program EIR, which means that impacts are assessed at a programmatic or high level rather than at a detailed project level. A program EIR is an appropriate document because there are not specific projects associated with future housing developments under the housing element update. And as such, assessing impacts would be too speculative and would potentially paint an inaccurate picture of potential environmental impacts. As such, the program subsequent EIR that was prepared for the project assesses future housing development associated with the RENA on any combination of the candidate housing sites without assessing any individual projects. The city has prepared a number of program EIRs in the past. So as an example, the city prepared a program EIR for the Holly Seacliff specific plan, which you'll remember the Holly Triangle Townhomes project just came before you. That was a project that came under that program EIR. And so projects coming under a program EIR are required to demonstrate consistency with that EIR, and where they cannot demonstrate consistency, they need to, they need to prepare further environmental documentation. So in addition to the EIR being a program EIR, it's also a subsequent EIR. What that means is that the EIR tears off of or uses the city's general plan update EIR as a basis for the environmental analysis. Because the RENA units associated with the housing element update could not have been known at the time the general plan update EIR was prepared, and because the RENA exceeds the number of units that were analyzed in the general plan update by over 6,000 units, a subsequent EIR is required to evaluate potential development that was not analyzed in the general plan EIR. In addition, the general plan EIR did not evaluate recently adopted thresholds under the SEQA guidelines concerning energy, tribal cultural resources, and wildfire, which are now addressed in this EIR. Overall, the analysis and conclusions in the general plan EIR are used as a baseline for the analysis and conclusions in this EIR. Key to the analysis is to evaluate whether changes resulting from the project result in new or significant environmental impacts. So the program draft EIR includes several sections. The first is the executive summary section, which summarizes the projects, the impacts, mitigation that's proposed to reduce impacts, and it includes a summary of alternatives to the project. The introduction also discusses, the introduction section discusses the purpose of the draft EIR, provides background on the project, and provides SEQA compliance information. The project description summarizes the project, the environmental setting, objectives, phasing, and anticipated approvals. The environmental analysis section describes existing conditions, methodologies, thresholds of significance, environmental impacts, and mitigation measures. The other SEQA considerations chapter summarizes significant unavoidable impacts and discloses potentially growth-inducing impacts. The alternatives chapter describes potential alternatives to the project and identifies the environmentally superior alternative. The effects found not to be significant chapter identifies resource areas where either a less than significant or a no impact determination was made. And finally, the list of preparers identifies the EIR preparation team. The project was determined to either have no impact or a less than significant impact related to aesthetics, agriculture and forestry resources, biological resources, mineral resources, and wildfire. The EIR included a summary of these impacts in Section 8, Effects Found Not to Be Significant. Topics requiring further analysis in the EIR include air quality, cultural resources, energy, geology and soils, greenhouse gas emissions, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, land use and planning, noise, population and housing, public services, recreation, transportation, tribal cultural resources, and utilities and service systems. Altogether, the project would result in significant and unavoidable impacts related to five resource areas. Significant and unavoidable impacts were generally identified because it would be too speculative to conclude that the project would result in less than significant impacts due to the absence of project-specific information for future housing development projects. For example, the EIR concluded that the project would result in significant and unavoidable air quality impacts because future projects could generate emissions that could exceed applicable thresholds despite mitigation. Similarly, future projects could generate GHG emissions that could violate applicable GHG reduction plans. With respect to hydrology and water quality, the 13,368 RENA units were not known at the time the most recently adopted water quality management plan was prepared for the city, which, as you know, that document looks at existing and projected demands for water and the availability of water to supply those demands. For this reason, and because water supply in the state is really uncertain due to drought conditions, impacts were determined to be significant and unavoidable. Similarly, impacts related to utilities were also considered significant and unavoidable because an increased demand for water would potentially impact the groundwater basin. And lastly, noise impacts were also determined to be significant and unavoidable because future projects could result in noise and vibration impacts that could exceed applicable standards despite mitigation. In addition to identifying project impacts, SEQA also requires a discussion of potential alternatives that could reduce or avoid project impacts. The draft EIR identified two alternatives. Under Alternative 1, the No Project Alternative, development would proceed according to the city's existing general plan and zoning. State housing requirements for implementation of the project's proposed programs and strategies to increase housing capacity and the production of affordable dwelling units in the city would not occur. Alternative 1 would not consider the candidate housing sites and adoption of the land use amendments and rezones necessary to achieve the city's RENA. As a result, this alternative would not satisfy the project objectives because it would not accommodate the RENA and would not satisfy legislative mandates for the housing element update. Alternative 2 would meet the city's RENA. However, residential development would be concentrated around the Beach Ettinger Corridor specific plan, and more specifically, would occur in portions of the specific plan known as transition corridor areas, and would occur on fewer parcels, which would support transit-oriented communities and reduce vehicle miles traveled, would also reduce transportation-related energy demands and associated air quality and GHG emissions. However, this approach would require taller building heights and higher densities to achieve development and to meet the RENA. Dense development could be cost prohibitive and could hinder new development, which could lead to fewer units being developed overall. This alternative would also not expand housing opportunities throughout the city because they'd be concentrated in this one area and would not affirmatively promote or further fair housing to the same degree as the project, which is required under state law. The No Project Alternative would be this environmentally superior alternative because it would avoid many of the project impacts. However, this alternative would not achieve any of the project objectives. The city would not meet its RENA under this alternative and thus would directly conflict with state law, which stipulates that a jurisdiction must assess its housing element every eight years and identify sites for housing and provide for the housing needs for all economic segments of the community. The draft SEIR was released for a 45-day public review period, during which the city received a total of five comment letters from four different agencies. One was received from the Gabriolino Tongva Indians of California, one from Caltrans, two letters from the Orange County Healthcare Agency, and one from the Ocean View School District. No comments were received from interested individuals or the general public. The final EIR includes responses to comments received and text changes to the EIR for purposes of clarification or correction. The text changes do not change the conclusions or the analysis in the SEIR. In cases where a project would result in environmental impacts that cannot be mitigated to a level below significance, a statement of overriding considerations is required. Because implementation of the project would create significant and unavoidable impacts related to air quality, greenhouse gases, noise, hydrology and water quality, and utilities, a statement of overriding considerations is required and was prepared under the SEQA guidelines. The document also includes findings of fact, which conclude that there are specific overriding economic, legal, social, and other project benefits that outweigh significant environmental impacts associated with the project. Now that we've gone over the EIR as a whole, I'd like to summarize the SEQA process and our outreach efforts. The city began efforts on the EIR in August of 2021 when the city filed a notice of preparation to notify the public of its intent to prepare an EIR for the housing element update. The NOP was available for a 30-day public review period. A public scoping meeting was held during that comment period to solicit comments and to identify issue areas to be studied in the EIR. Preparation of the draft SEIR began after the close of the NOP period. It was made available for public review and comment for a period of 45 days in the summer of 2022. Notice of the draft EIR was made available was made available in the Surf City break, in the newspaper, on the city's website, and on all of the city's social media platforms, Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram. Following the close of the review period, the city drafted the final EIR, which includes the response to comments. The final EIR was posted on the city's website, and responses were sent to all of the commenting agencies at the end of September. Following this meeting, the city council will consider the recommendation made by the planning commission and will ultimately make a decision on the project and the EIR. That concludes my presentation. And before I open it up for questions, I'd like to just note that Rita Garcia with Kim Lee Horn is also available here to answer any questions.
Thanks, Alyssa. Do any of the commissioners have any questions at this time? Okay, we'll start with Commissioner Skandura.
Sure, I just have one question, and this is a comment that was raised a little bit earlier this evening. Can you talk about the public notification requirements? Not only, or the public notification that was carried out, particularly, especially for this meeting? What was the radius of residents and businesses who were notified near the areas that are being considered under the housing element? That kind of a thing?
I really can only speak to the EIR notification process because that's the portion I was involved with. So I'll let Jennifer or someone else on our team weigh in on.
Yeah, I can respond.
Sure.
We did an expanded notification, expanded notification in the newspaper, which is required when you have a citywide, when you have the number of properties that exceed a certain amount, then you would do an expanded newspaper notification ad as well as we notified all the property owners with affected properties in BECSP, SB7, SP9, and the citywide, like RT, Golden West College, if they were part of an overlay or a rezoning. And then we also did notification of our interested parties list, which we maintain a mailing list as well as an email notification list.
Residents and businesses within 500 feet or 1,000 feet, were they notified?
No, just property owners.
And is that what the, is that what the law requires?
Yes.
Okay, Vice Chair Acosta Galván.
For Alternative 2, you stated that it meets RENA, but it doesn't affordably further fair housing. So given how I understand the housing element process and state housing law, would that mean that we would be out of compliance with our housing element?
Yes, it wouldn't equitably distribute housing throughout the city, and so we would not comply with state housing law.
Great. So then we would be vulnerable to lawsuits and lose funding for many things, essentially, right?
Yeah, it'd be hard to get HCD certification for that type of housing element. So while it meets the number of RENA units that are required, it does not equitably distribute them to further housing.
Any other, yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I have a question. Most SEQA documents that I've seen or reviewed have some sort of environmental justice component to them. Is there a reason why this one doesn't include one?
Yeah, so typically, the environmental justice information is provided in the document that we're analyzing itself. So the housing element includes that type of information, and I believe there's a robust discussion there. And then because we're analyzing the housing element, it's sort of inferred that that analysis is throughout the document.
Okay, perfect. And then I know there were two sites discussed towards the end of the report, which is Palm Golden West specific plan and the Huntington Harbor. I know we're not looking at these sites because of the prolonged process of the Coastal Commission. Is there any future kind of, are we looking to, in the future, go back and assess those properties for redevelopment or no?
We could. I'm not as familiar with the specifics of those properties. I know, for example, remediation would be costly on one of them. So it would really, I think, be more of a matter if a private developer wanted to develop those properties. But in this case, because there were burdens that could be too cumbersome to actually get housing developed, they weren't included as an alternative sites analysis.
Commissioner Rodriguez, just to make it clear, when we're doing sites analysis for the housing element, we have to look at properties with the potential to develop within the planning period. With the Palm Golden West specific plan, we really liked that specific plan area. But it has oil allowances, I think, for the next, I can't remember the last time we heard from them. It was going to be like 15 or 20 years. And so we can't make that finding that it's viable as a site for this cycle. But certainly, if there ever becomes an opportunity, we would look at that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I just have one question. For the overriding considerations, so you had mentioned as part of your report that they do get documented. Did those go in front of any boards? Or, you know, the planning commission or any state board or any oversight board that reviews that and then approves that? What, I guess my question overall is what happens with that?
Yeah, so that's part of the environmental package that's in front of you tonight, and that will be in front of the council. So that's a piece of information that the planning commission and the council should consider when deciding to make a recommendation of approval or not on the EIR itself. And I believe that's included as an attachment to the, at least the study session materials.
Yeah, it's included also in your public hearing. The planning commission is being asked to make a recommendation on the SEQA findings as well as the statement of overriding considerations.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Since there are no further questions, this concludes our study session, and we will resume for our regular session at 6:00 PM. and we will resume for our regular session at 6:00 PM.
Company, always on the run. Destiny is a rising sun. Oh, I was born, six gun in my hand. Behind a gun, I make my final stand. It's why they call me Bad Company, and I can't deny it. Bad Company, till the day I die. Till the day I die. Bad Company, oh yeah, yeah. Bad Company, till the day I die. Tell me you're young and I'm free. Oh, but I'm back. It's where I play. Down if I'm dirty. Somebody got to run. Yeah, Bad Company, till the day I die. Till the day I die. Bad Company, I can't deny it. Bad Company, till the day I die. I said, it's Bad Company, oh yeah, yeah. Bad Company, till the day I die. Tell me you're young and I'm free. Oh, but I'm back. It's where I play. Down if I'm dirty. Somebody got to run. Yeah, Bad Company, till the day I die. Till the day I die. Bad Company, 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 oh yeah, yeah. Bad Company, till the day I die. Tell me you're young and I'm free. Oh, but I'm back. It's where I play. Down if I'm dirty. Somebody got to run. Yeah, Bad Company, till the day I die. I said, it's Bad Company, oh yeah, yeah. Bad Company, till the day I die. Tell me you're young and I'm free. Oh, but I'm back. It's where I play. Down if I'm dirty. Somebody got to run. Yeah, Bad Company, till the day I die. I see a red door, and I want it painted black. No colors anymore, I want them to turn black. I see the girls who buy dressed in their summer clothes. I have to turn my head until my darkness goes. I see a line of cars, and they're all painted black. With flowers and my love won't never to come back. I see people turn their heads and quickly look away. Like a newborn baby, it just happens every day. I look inside myself and see my heart is black. I see my red door, I must have it painted black. Maybe then I'll fade away, and I'll have to face the facts. Not easy facing up when your whole world is black. No more will my green sea go turn a deeper blue. I could not foresee this thing happening to you. If I look hard enough into the setting sun, my love will laugh with me before the morning comes. I see a red door, and I want it painted black. No colors anymore, I want them to turn black. I see the girls who buy dressed in their summer clothes. I have to turn my head until my darkness goes. I wanna see a fan, painted black, magical night, magical snow. I wanna see the sun, lighting up from the sky. I wanna see a fan, painted, 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 painted black. One way or another, I'm gonna find ya. I'm gonna get ya, get ya, get ya, get ya. One way or another, I'm gonna win ya. I'm gonna get ya, get ya, get ya, get ya. One way or another, I'm gonna see ya. I wanna meet ya, meet ya, meet ya, meet ya. One day, maybe next week, I'm gonna meet ya. I'm gonna meet ya, I'll meet ya. I will drive past your house. And if the lights are all down, I'll see you around. One way or another, I'm gonna find ya. I'm gonna get ya, get ya, get ya, get ya. One way or another. One way or another, I'm gonna lose ya. I'm gonna give you the slip, or slip over here. For another, I'm gonna lose ya. I'm gonna trick ya, I'll trick ya. One way or another, I'm gonna lose ya. I'm gonna trick ya, trick ya, trick ya, trick ya. One way or another, I'm gonna lose ya. I'm gonna give you the slip. I walk down a mall stand over by the bar where I can see it all fine. I'm gonna lead you to the supermarket checkout. The groceries ain't right, get your sign to drive. One way or another, I'm gonna get ya. One way or another, I'm gonna get ya. I can see it all fine. One way or another, I'm gonna get ya. 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 Where I can see it all fine. One way or another, I'm gonna get ya. Where I can see it all fine. Once upon a time, you dressed so fine. Do the bumps a dime in your prime. Then you... People called, say beware doll, you're bound to fall. You thought they were all kidding you. You used to laugh about everybody that was hanging out. Now you don't talk so loud. Now you don't seem so proud about having to be scrounging your next meal. How does it feel? How does it feel? To be without home? Like a complete unknown? Like a rolling stone? Are you gone to the finest school? All right, Miss Lonely, but you know you only used to get juiced in it. Nobody's ever taught you how to live out on the street. And now you're gonna have to get used to it. You say you never compromise with a mystery trend. But now you realize he's not selling any alibis. As you stare into the vacuum of his eyes. And say, do you want to make a deal? How does it feel? How does it feel? To be on your own? With no direction? A complete unknown? Like a rolling stone? Are you never turned around to see the frowns on the jugglers and the clowns? When they all did tricks for you? Never understood that it ain't no good. You shouldn't let other people get your kicks for you. You used to ride on a chrome horse with your diplomat. Who carried on his shoulder, eh, Simi's cat? Ain't it hard when you discover that? He really wasn't where it's at? After he took from you everything he could steal? How does it feel? How does it feel? To be on your own? With no direction? Like a complete unknown? Like a rolling stone? Princess on the steeple and all the pretty people. They're all drinking, thinking that they got it made. Exchanging all precious gifts. But you better take a diamond ring, you better pawn it, babe. You used to be so amused. That Napoleon and Rags and the language that he used. Go to him now, he calls you, you can't refuse. When you ain't got nothing, you got nothing to lose. You're invisible now, you got no secrets to conceal. How does it feel? Ah, how does it feel? To be on your own?
I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting to order. Welcome to the October 11th, 2022 Huntington Beach Planning Commission meeting. While the Planning Commission welcomes public involvement and free speech, it rejects comments from anyone that are discriminatory, defamatory, or otherwise not protected speech. Those comments will not inform nor be considered by the Planning Commission and may be cause for the Chair to interrupt the speaker. Such comments will not be consented to or otherwise adopted by the Planning Commission in its discussions and findings for any matter tonight. So, thank you for that. I also want to note, since we do have quite a bit of people in the audience tonight from the public, that we do follow the agenda, which is... If you didn't see it, it's at the front door. So, if you didn't pick one up, you might want to just go and get one so you can follow along. So, thank you for coming tonight. Okay, so the next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and Commissioner Rodriguez has agreed to lead us in that.
Thank you. Please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have the roll call? Yes. Commissioner Adam? Here. Commissioner Mandick? Vice Chair Acosta-Govon?
Here.
Chair Perkins?
Here.
Commissioner Skandura?
There.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
Commissioner Ray?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Okay, thank you. So, now it's time for public comments for items that are not on the agenda this evening. Do we have any public comments?
We have one. Gerald Chapman.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Gerald Chapman. Earlier at the study session, I asked the question about the notice to the homeowners in our quarter section. And staff gave you the answer that the cumulative total for the three overlays was over the number that needed written notification. But each zoning text amendment is a separate item here. There are separate numbers and everything. So, I think that each one is going to need to have notification, written notification, if it is under the number. And I think that number is 1,000 total residents. But I know that our quarter section, that the overlay is going in, the Ellis-Golden West Quarter Section, there's less than 300 addresses in that. So, I still challenge that whether the portion of the meeting dealing with the Ellis-Golden West Quarter Section is a legal meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have public hearing item, which is the General Plan Amendment Number 21-003 and associated actions to update the general plan housing element for the 2021 through 2029 planning period. Commissioners, please state your disclosures regarding this item. And I'll start with Commissioner Adam on my right.
Or Chair Perkins, may I make an announcement?
Yes.
Thank you. I made a similar announcement at the study session this evening, and I'll repeat it once again. Commissioner Mandick has a commercial property located within 500 feet of a parcel proposed for inclusion in the affordable housing overlay listed in Item H in the recommended actions before you tonight for the Housing Element project. So, in the absence of formal FPPC advice regarding whether Item H may be segmented or voted on separately from the rest of the items, Commissioner Mandick asked me to announce that she has decided to exercise an abundance of caution and recuse herself from the entire Housing Element project decision and to make that announcement on the record on her behalf tonight.
Okay. Thank you for including that. So, we will continue.
Yes, thank you. I had correspondence and questions for staff.
I spoke with staff.
I spoke with City Councilmember Kerr and also staff.
And I too spoke with staff, spoke to Commissioner Mandick, visited the three properties that are subject to the rezoning. And then I also have a lot of past history, having been on the Planning Commission, voting on the original Beach Addinge specific plan, as well as the amendments, amendments for Site Specific, or Specific Plan 7, and Specific Plan 9. And then I've been involved in numerous entitlements in many of these areas that are now subject to the overlay.
Yes, I spoke to Councilmember Natalie Mojer, and I also spoke with staff earlier today.
I spoke with Councilmember Peterson and with the Historic Resources Board.
Thank you. Do we have a presentation from staff? Yes, Nicole Alvee will be giving the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Perkins. I'm
Good evening, Chair Perkins and Commissioners. The item we will discuss tonight is the 2021 through 2029 Housing Element Update and Associated Implementation Actions to Accommodate the Rina. There are several entitlement applications associated with this request. GPA 21003 is the Housing Element Update document itself. The subsequent EIR covers the Housing Element Update and the implementation actions. The implementation actions include a general plan amendment to update the land use element of the general plan to discuss the proposed affordable housing overlay. The zoning map amendment is to apply the overlays to the city zoning map. And zoning text amendment 22008 proposes to create a new Chapter 229 in the zoning code that describes the development standards for the affordable housing overlay. Next, there is a zoning map amendment to rezone three properties to residential medium-high density. And finally, there are three zoning text amendments proposed to amend three existing specific plans. ZTA 22009 amends the Beach Addinger Corridor specific plan to expand the existing affordable housing overlay. ZTA 22007 amends the Holly Seacliff specific plan to create an affordable housing overlay. And ZTA 22006 amends the Ellis-Golden-West specific plan to create a residential high-density overlay. So, here is another overview of the required entitlements for the proposed housing element update and the implementation actions. The Housing Element Update document itself is a general plan amendment. The RMH rezoning only needs one zoning map amendment. And as you can see, the overlay entails the general plan amendment, zoning map amendment, to establish the overlay in the general plan, the general plan land use map, and the city zoning map. A zoning text amendment will create Chapter 229 in the zoning code, and that will contain all the development standards for the overlay. And a zoning text amendment is proposed for each of the three specific plans that have proposed overlays, which again are Beach Addinger specific plan, Holly Seacliff specific plan, and Ellis-Golden-West specific plan. So, here is an overview of all the public outreach that occurred as part of the Housing Element Update process. It kicked off in spring 2021 with a joint Planning Commission and City Council study session. We also did three community meetings, an online survey, and we also held a Spanish-language outreach event. The first draft of the Housing Element document was published on the website for a public review and comment period. Each of the four subsequent revised documents were published on the website as well, and an email notification was also sent out to the Housing Element Update subscription list. We also maintained a page for the Housing Element Update on the website and updated it throughout the process with new information. And we also sent out emails regarding meetings and public input opportunities to the email subscription list. So, the Housing Element document has a few different sections. It includes a population and housing profile of the city, evaluates constraints to constructing housing, and resources available for housing development. It evaluates the city's existing programs and policies from the fifth cycle document as well, and it also identifies sites that are appropriate to accommodate the city's Rina allocation and provide policies, programs, and quantified objectives to achieve the city's housing goals. So, as a sample of all the data that's in the community profile section, this table shows that between 2010 and 2019, there have been slight changes in household types in the city. The overall number of households has increased, and householders aged 65 and over have increased by just about 3%. This section also provides a lot of data and information on special needs groups. About 42% of all households in the city include a senior aged 60 and over. About 10% of households are seniors who live alone. 9.5% of households include a person that has at least one disability. Single-parent households are almost 5%, with female-headed, single-parent households comprising 3.5% of that total. And about 8% of the population are people living in poverty. So, here's an example of the income thresholds for Orange County. The area median income for Orange County for a four-person household is $119,100 in 2022. An extremely low-income household of four people would make less than $40,650. A moderate-income household of four people can make up to $142,900. Above moderate income is anything over $142,900. On the next slide, we have some info about employment and average wages. So, some examples of those wages in a household, as you can see here, would be a married school teacher and sales worker with two children. They would have about a $123,000 annual income and would be qualifying as a moderate-income The community profile section also talks about employment in the city. The top employment sectors are education, healthcare, and social assistance at 20%. Next is professional scientific management and administrative services at 13%, which is followed by retail and manufacturing at 11% each. Our local tourism is about 10% of the employment, with fields and arts, entertainment, recreation, accommodations, and food services making up that number. Finance, insurance, and real estate are about 8% of employment. As you can see, the tables show mean salaries by occupation in Orange County. The only two occupations that pay more than the area median income are management and legal professions. The city's largest sectors, such as education, sales and retail, and food services, pay below the county AMI. The community profile also provides a snapshot on the cost of housing in the city. Overall, the average cost of a rental unit has increased by 31% from 2014 to 2020. Lower-income households can't afford market-rate units without substantial cost burdens. Moderate-income households at the upper levels of the income category can generally afford market-rate rentals. In 2019, the median value of a for-sale home was about $771,000. All income groups can't afford market-rate ownership without substantial cost burdens. So, to summarize, the community profile section, who in Huntington Beach needs affordable housing? This includes people that work here, like teachers and hospitality workers, but are not able to afford to live here. Or special needs households, like seniors, disabled people, and single parents. Or this could also include children of longtime HB residents. So, that said, what does affordable housing in Huntington Beach look like? Here are photos of two communities called Cape Anne and Promenade. These are two affordable projects that are located in the Holly Seacliff specific plan. As you can see, they have high-quality architecture and landscaping as well. These are photos of Oceana. This is a 100% affordable rental project in the Beach Addinger Corridor specific plan. They also have nice landscaping at the entrance, and as well as amenities for residents, like barbecue area. So, regarding the state review of the Housing Element Update document, in this case, the state is called HCD. The Housing Element is one of the seven required elements of the general plan, and it's on an update cycle every eight years. We submitted the first draft of the document in December 2021 to HCD and subsequently submitted four drafts for their review. On September 30th, we received a letter from HCD indicating that our Housing Element document is in substantial compliance with housing element law. And the main benefit of HCD certification is the presumption of a legally adequate housing element. HCD has a vast enforcement authority, and they can refer jurisdictions that are out of compliance to the Attorney General for further review. Potential penalties can include loss of local land use authority, loss of building permit issuance authority, and fines of up to $100,000 per month. Eligibility for many state funding programs also require a compliant housing element. That includes programs like CDBG, Local Housing Trust Fund, and the Caltrans Sustainable Communities Grant. Also, the unmet Rina from the sixth cycle would carry over into the seventh cycle. So, that would be in addition to any new units allocated to the city during the seventh cycle process. So, here's some information on Section 4 of the Housing Element, which is the housing plan. There are nine goals in the housing plan, and this includes goals for affirmatively furthering fair housing, accommodating the Rina at all income levels, and maximizing solutions for people experiencing homelessness. And there are 40 programs in this section to support carrying out these goals. So, here we have the city's 2021 to 2029 Rina. The Rina gives every jurisdiction a quantified housing need by income category. As you can see, the total number of units to demonstrate zoning capacity for is 13,368. Just over 5,000 of the units are for very low and low-income households, about 2,300 for moderate-income households, and 5,215 for above moderate income. So, this table shows an overall breakdown of the city's strategy to accommodate the Rina. The Housing Element shows that the city is not able to meet the Rina using projects that are approved or pending and will be occupied during the planning period, ADUs, and the hotel motel conversions. Those items alone are not enough to meet the Rina. So, therefore, we have the proposed affordable housing overlays and rezonings are necessary in order to demonstrate adequate zoning capacity for the Rina. Next, this is some information on the methodology of the adequate sites section, which is Appendix B in the Housing Element document. There are a lot of bills and laws related to housing elements now that the city's document has to comply with. The sites inventories has properties that are smaller and some that are larger, and so we needed to do additional analysis in order to justify including these sites in the inventory. Also, because the city identified capacity for more than 50% of its lower-income Rina on non-vacant properties, HCD required us to do a detailed sites analysis for that as well. City needed to show substantial evidence that the property will be developed and demonstrate that the existing units, sorry, uses would not be an impediment to the development of housing during the planning period. The substantial evidence described in the Housing Element includes past redevelopment trends on similar properties, existing conditions of the identified properties, and also an economic feasibility analysis that was provided as Appendix D in the Housing Element. Also, the actual sites identified in the Housing Element need to comply with the affirmatively furthering fair housing requirements of AB 686, including that they have proximity to transit, services and dealing needs, readily available infrastructure, and dispersed throughout the city, available in high-resource areas to provide those access to services and dealing needs as well. Also, the site capacity analysis is required to show information about any environmental constraints on properties, and you'll also see a lot of information in the document about the city's past performance with residential development on sites that are similar to the properties in the sixth cycle sites inventory. This shows that residential development is feasible on these types of properties and would be able to occur during the planning period. The methodology is also required to show that there will be no net loss of housing, including in our sites analysis, the assumption that each site would not be built at the maximum permitted density. So, because the city is not able to meet the Rina through alone the pending projects, ADUs, and hotel motel conversions, the adequate sites program is necessary to show that the city can provide the zoning capacity for the lower-income Rina. Housing element laws require that if a project proposes 20% of the units as affordable units, then the development is permitted by right. For the lower-income Rina, the minimum default density allowed is 30 units per acre in order for lower-income units to be feasible within a project. Some sites may have less than a 16-unit capacity, but the document provides analysis to justify this, which is that these properties are likely to be developed through lot consolidation with other adjacent lots. And also, the zoning must allow for exclusively residential uses, and also, non-residential sites can be rezoned to allow residential development. So, here is an overview of the adequate sites program. Basically, the RMH rezoning only requires a zoning map amendment. Implementing the affordable housing overlays requires a general plan amendment, a zoning map amendment, and four zoning text amendments. One zoning text amendment will create Chapter 229 in the zoning code for the development standards of the overlay, and the three other ZTAs will amend those associated specific So, first, we will talk specifically about the proposed RMH rezoning sites. These three properties are the Chuck E. Cheese on McFadden, the Frontier Yard on Slater, and the Reliable Lumber property. It's more appropriate to rezone these specific sites than include them in an overlay because the city has received specific interest from developers, and in some cases, also received tentative draft plans to develop these sites with residential. So, the RMH rezoning will accommodate 428 units. The existing RMH designation allows up to 25 units per acre, and these properties would be subject to the existing zoning code requirements of the RMH zone. The city will get credit for moderate and above-moderate Rina for these properties. These properties were also identified due to their likelihood for redevelopment during the planning period, including property owner interest, the properties being marginally used currently, access to opportunity factors, and they are large areas owned by a single So, here's an overview of the proposed affordable housing overlay. As we said earlier, there are several entitlements needed, including a general plan amendment, zoning text amendment, and zoning map amendment. The ZTA will establish Chapter 229 in the zoning code. It will also allow for development of up to 70 units per acre, and the development standards facilitate this development at the proposed density per state law. Any project proposed pursuant to the overlay must provide 20% low-income units on site. Similar to the existing Beach Addinger specific plan, affordable housing overlay, multifamily residential would be permitted by right, provided at least 20% of the units are deed restricted for lower-income households. The proposed development standards are based on the affordable housing overlay and neighborhood parkway standards of the Beach Addinger specific plan. So, as an example, the Beach and Ocean project at Beach and Adams across from the Newland Center is in the neighborhood parkways segment, and that project was built according to those requirements. Also, performance standards and mitigation measures are in the zoning code that would address development of any residential that's adjacent to industrial. Also, the overlay does have a sunset clause. It ends at the end of the sixth cycle or when the city achieves its Rina, whichever is first. Also, this is an overlay, and all of the properties will retain their base land use and zoning designations. No nonconformities would be created as a result of applying the overlay. Outside of the specific plan areas, select sites primarily located along the RT-zoned Gothard Corridor are proposed to be designated within affordable housing overlay. The Gothard Corridor was identified because it's well-connected to many amenities of the city. It's fairly close to Central Park, can access the freeway, and has pretty close access to dealing needs like services, retail, et cetera. Next, in consultation with Golden West College Administration, the city has identified the Golden West College campus to be part of the affordable housing overlay. Appendix B identifies the construction of up to 600 residential units on the campus, and that furthers the Golden West College 2030 comprehensive master plan goal to develop housing on their campus. So, here's some representative photos of what the Golden West College property and the RT-zone area look like. The top two photos are Golden West College. They have a big amount of surface parking area. They also have some internal space within the site that they could reconfigure and develop on. The bottom two photos are of the Gothard area. As you can see, some of the properties out there are underutilized with just outdoor storage, vehicle storage. They have not had much recent investment. They have not had much recent investment. Even if an existing industrial property is within the overlay, the existing business could continue to operate, improve their property, and grow their business pursuant to their base zoning designation. Next, we'll discuss the existing Beach Addinger Corridor Specific Plan, AKA SP14. There is an existing affordable housing overlay within SP14 that was adopted in 2020, and it permits residential projects by right if they propose at least 20% lower-income units on the site. The SP14 area is already zoned for residential development, and it allows development at densities that can accommodate lower-income development. The SP14 affordable housing overlay will expand the provisions of the existing overlay throughout the specific plan area. The existing development standards will remain applicable to any project that's submitted pursuant to this overlay. And these sites were chosen due to their current states as underutilized, commercial properties, potential for lot consolidation, and access to the freeway, jobs, and services. Here are some photos of the SP14 area. You can see, again, a lot of surface parking, aging buildings, and down at the bottom, we also have our Navigation Center property. Next, we have the proposed affordable overlay within the SP9 Holly Seacliffs Specific Plan area. Existing industrial designated properties along Golden West Street are proposed for inclusion within the Holly Seacliff Specific Plan Affordable Housing Overlay. These sites are on the east side of Golden West, north and south of Garfield. Because these sites were previously noted as opportunity sites for housing, the city worked with the industrial property owners of this area to get their feedback regarding the proposed location of the overlay in this area. The provisions of the SP9 affordable housing overlay refer to the development standards proposed to be established in the zoning code, Chapter 229. And these sites were also chosen due to large area of oil properties, under-single ownership, underutilized, access to services, jobs, retail, schools, parks, and they're also designated as a highest resource area.
Yeah, whoever's online, if you could mute yourself, we're getting feedback.
You are muted.
Well, I guess that takes care of that.
Let me get back to my place.
Are any of those, are individuals who are online, are they allowed to make?
Only two staff members are online.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, there's a proposed area designated for an overlay within SP7, which is the Alice Golden West Specific Plan, located on the west side of Golden West, north of Garfield. The majority of this area was previously occupied by an outdoor landscaping company business, South Coast Supply, and it's designated for a state residential in SP7. The proposed SP7 RH overlay would allow residential development in accordance with the maximum density and zoning standards of the existing residential high-density requirements in the zoning code. The area was identified due to being a large area, under-single ownership, underutilized, and high access to opportunity factors. It's in an area that is identified as being of the highest resource. Also, the RH development standards are comparable to the existing SP7 requirements. As an example, the maximum building height in both the RH and SP7 is 35 feet. So here's some photos of the SP7 area identified and the identified SP9 area. You can see much of the area has chain-link fencing, outdoor storage, and oil-related equipment on the properties. So we just want to note that the Housing Element document is not a construction mandate, and no development or construction is proposed on any site as part of these actions. Also, the overlays do not change the base zoning of any property. Everything that's currently allowed by the base zoning would still be allowed if an overlay is applied to the site. And generally, the overlays add the option for multifamily residential development if 20% of the units constructed are deed-restricted affordable units. Okay, so now we're here back to our RENA strategy table with the proposed rezoning and affordable housing overlays. The city is able to provide adequate zoning capacity to accommodate its RENA. Now, here are the factors taken into account for the affordability assumptions and calculation of the capacity. You'll see that this information is split up into densities, less than 30 units per acre, and 30 units or more per acre. 30 units per acre is an HCD standard of development density that can accommodate and absorb the cost of providing onsite affordable units. So therefore, any property that has zoning for less than 30 units per acre is not able to accommodate any low-income units, only moderate and above. So the affordable housing overlay sites were assumed to be developed with 30% lower-income, 15% moderate, and 55% above-moderate units, and this is because they allow 30 units or more. The rezoning sites were assumed to be developed with 30% moderate income and 70% above-moderate units because they allow less than 30 units per acre. These assumptions take into account that some sites would be developed as 100% affordable projects, and some sites will increase affordability in order to utilize density bonus provisions in the state laws. No net loss requirements mean that the city has to maintain an inventory of sites to accommodate the RENA for each income level throughout the planning period, and HCD recommends a 15% to 30% buffer. As an example, for needing the buffer, say, the housing element gets adopted, but several overlay sites develop with the project pursuant to the base zoning, and it's not residential. If we didn't have a buffer, then our available zoning capacity would not be able to accommodate the RENA. The city would be out of compliance in that case with housing element laws, which require the city to have a buffer on the zoning capacity in order for the city to be able to meet its RENA at any time during the planning period. That's why there's a buffer between the RENA requirement and the zoning capacity provided in the housing element. Now, we have an overview of the draft subsequent program, EIR, that was prepared for the Housing Element update and that we talked about during the study session as well. The EIR analyzed 15 topic areas and categorized each analysis by its level of impact. The EIR concluded that there would be significant and unavoidable impacts to air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, hydrology and water quality, noise, and utility and service systems. A final EIR was prepared that included the draft EIR, comments received on the draft, responses to those comments, any text changes to the draft, and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, or MMRP, as you might hear it referred to. Also, there is a statement of overriding considerations proposed to be adopted because there are specific overriding benefits of the overall project that outweigh the significant effects on the environment. That statement is included in your packets in Attachment 1. It's after the draft City Council resolution. It's an attachment to that resolution. So all that said, we are here to the staff recommendation, which is to approve the following requests listed here with findings, to update the Housing Element document and associated program implementation actions, and forward them to the City Council for consideration. This concludes the staff presentation. We wanted to note that on November 15th, the City Council will hold a public hearing on these same items heard by the Planning Commission tonight. Staff and our consultant, Kim Lee-Horn and Associates, we have Dave Barquist and Rita Garcia, are available for any questions that the Planning Commission may have. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm going to open it up for other commissioners to ask questions, but before I do that, I would like to ask staff to address the public outreach again, so the same thing that we addressed in the study session earlier. What are the requirements for public outreach? And specifically, if you can address Mr. Chapman's comments about the individual items coming forward and either meeting or not meeting the minimum requirement.
We believe that we provided adequate legal notice pursuant to government code.
Okay.
Which included expanded notice in the newspaper as well as legal notice to all property owners within the rezoning and overlay sites.
Okay, please, 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 please maintain the chromial. You'll have your opportunity to speak when we get to public comments. Okay, so I'd like to allow the commissioners to ask questions of staff, and we do have a lot of people on the public queue showing up, so you're not going to, I'm not going to be able to find you in that. So if you have questions, just raise your hands. So, okay, Commissioner Ray?
Okay, I have a couple of questions. First one is on, there's a number of commercial sites that are going to have an overlay for residences. And so my first question is, has any analysis been done on the number of small businesses that'll be shut down? Should these be converted? I understand that with just the overlay, they can still continue to operate, but if they are converted into a residence development, what kind of analysis has been done?
That type of analysis is not really the purview of the Housing Element document. The purpose is to analyze if residential development is feasible on the identified sites. So there's not really associated analysis about the impacts on business, particularly because most of the sites are overlays, so commercial development and non-residential development could continue as it exists.
Okay. Second question I had was on Golden West College. Their 2030 master plan that they had mentioned specifically student housing, they didn't mention anything about public housing. I was wondering if, because we are including some of their property, have some other conversations with leadership at Golden West College occurred that indicate that, yes, this will be available for public housing?
Yes, we have had meetings with the Golden West College Administration, and the design of their, what they're looking at to design would be considered regular apartment units. They would not be designed as dorms. Dorms would not be counted towards RENA credit. So as long as it, if it's designed as individual apartment units with their own kitchens and bathrooms, then they would count as a housing unit towards the RENA, and that is what they're looking to, type of product they're looking to construct.
Okay, thank you. That's my last question.
Thank you. Commissioner Skandura?
Sure, I have a couple of questions. First of all, the South Coast Supply area, just I wanted to confirm, the overlay that's going to go into the area that's covered under specific Plan 7, the Alice Golden West Specific Plan, it applies strictly to the South Coast Supply site? It doesn't apply to the museum next door, or to the horse stables nearby, or any other open properties, right?
It is not the horse stable to the north. It is the series of encyclopedia lots, and I believe it's the South Coast Supply. It's not the stables to the north.
Now, if this, if a developer came forward and decided to put, you know, multi-unit housing on this, on this particular property, is that going to in any way, shape, or form disrupt the amenities that, you know, people who live in that area come to enjoy, things like the horse trails, the green spaces, the open spaces, and other kinds of things up there? That's all provided in the specific plan?
So the other provisions of the specific plan would apply. So if in that area, there is a horse trail to be extended to traverse through that property, then they would need to provide that.
Okay, and then the last question I have, this just applies to the general housing element. So as I understand it, our RENA obligation would end either when we meet the magic, actually it's going to be, oh, the 13,368 number, of which we already have about 1,500 or 1,600 units already counted towards that, or January 1st, 2030, when this housing element period would end. Now, do all the units that satisfy the RENA obligations, do they have to be built within all the areas that are covered under this, under this element, namely, the rezoned properties, the housing overlay, the RH zones, Golden West College? Or can it be in other areas? Can these units be built in other areas of the city?
Any housing development that is proposed in the city through 2029 would count towards the RENA. So, you know, at any time, a property could propose, a property owner could propose a project for a general plan amendment or change the zone and propose a residential project on a property that's not identified in the housing element. So that could happen too, and in that case, then those units would count towards the RENA.
Right. The reason I asked that question is because, correct me if I'm wrong, the other day, the governor signed legislation that would allow owners of strip malls, mini malls, those kinds of places to be able to develop by right housing. And there's a lot of those kinds of properties that are in the city that are not covered within these housing, within these housing overlays. So I take it those properties, if they build units, would count towards our RENA allocation?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes, first and foremost, thank you to staff for the presentation. I have a question regarding the HCD letter at the end of the package that we received. It says that if we don't comply by October 15th, we won't be in compliance. So do we face any penalties after the 15th, or what, what are kind of the repercussions that we have?
So that is why we're bringing the Housing Element document with the program implementation actions that specifically are to accommodate the RENA. By bringing those together, we're able to, you know, we won't meet the deadline, but it will leave us less exposed and vulnerable to legal challenges. You know, several cities, even in Orange County, have faced lawsuits recently because they're, you know, by these organizations have determined that they're not making substantial effort to do their housing element, get it certified. So that's why we're making this effort to bring both the Housing Element document as well as the implementation actions to accommodate the RENA together.
Okay. And then one more question. As discussed in the presentation, today we aren't actually approving any projects or physical projects. So I'd like to know, when an actual project does come forward, will residents within a certain distance, usually what is 500 feet, get notification, even with the approval of the housing element?
So if it, a project would be proposed pursuant to an overlay, if they, you know, they have 20% lower-income units, then it would be a ministerial approval, and that would not involve a public notification.
Is there any efforts that the city could do to notify residents, or?
Yeah, I mean, we could add a notification requirement once a project is approved, but the project itself would not require a public hearing.
Please, please, you'll be given your opportunity to speak.
Does that make sense? So we could do a public notification, letting people either know a project was submitted or a project was approved, but the approval of the project would not be subject to a
And that's it for me.
Okay. Commissioner Adam?
Yeah, thank you, staff, for your presentation. I want to, you've already addressed this, but I just want to make sure I understand. So if a property owner finds their property within the affordable overlay zone, they still have the ability to develop to the existing zoning, correct? They are not, is there any penalty if they do not develop to the overlay zone?
No, so they could choose. They could, if they wanted to propose a project pursuant to their existing zoning, or what we would call the base zoning, they could do that. It's an additional option if they want to propose a project pursuant to the overlay. They're not required to do anything.
Okay, and the city- Okay, and the city can't require them, correct?
No, they could, they have the option.
I have a second question. How long have all these sites been identified and the overlay zone been available to the public? I mean, I guess what I'm asking, have these changed within the, within the last 30 days, 90 days? Or have these been relatively set for the last 18 months or so?
It's been relatively set. The first draft of the document came out at the end of October in 2021.
And, and I think all the overlays were in the housing element since February of this year.
Thank you.
Okay. Vice Chair Acosta Gilván?
So, in the Holly Seacliff area, have there already been multifamily residential projects that have been approved and built?
Yeah, there are several approved and constructed multifamily developments in the Holly Seacliff SP9 area, including ones that provide onsite affordable units. There's several Cape Anne Promenade, those are two developments that include affordable units. And there's also a recent project that came to the Planning Commission, was the Holly Triangle Townhomes, that included onsite affordable units as well.
Sorry, if you don't have the answer for this. For those projects, are they within those height limits of like 30 feet to 35 feet?
I would have to look at each specific project, because there are different zoning designations within the specific plan. So I'm not sure off the top of my head what the height limits for those were.
Got it.
But they, they all are with, I think they're all three-story?
That's what I was gonna say. I believe Holly, the Holly Triangle project was three-story units, right?
Yeah.
I wanted to get into the, the consequences of not certify, not adopting the measures that we need for the housing element, where we would be opened up, opened up to lawsuits. And additionally, I believe HCD is now saying, they've stated in a technical assistance letter that they sent to Santa Monica, that any projects proposed with a 20% affordable element in the project during a period where the city is not, their housing element isn't compliant, that they're subject to what's called the builder's remedy, that the city would not be able to deny those projects, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, that's accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by commissioners? Okay, I do have one question. So for, you had mentioned several properties that had already had some proposed development in the process of, I don't know if they've actually proposed it to the city or not. What I'm, what I'm wondering is, how far along are any of those projects? And have any of those projects had any, like, public hearings or any public input on those? Are they?
Are you talking about the RMH properties?
Like the, the Chuck E. Cheese side?
Yeah. So I, and to my knowledge, there have not been a project submitted there. But the city has received, you know, interest from developers. Sometimes they'll show us draft plans and just have an informal meeting to look at the plans and that kind of thing.
Okay. All right. All right, then, did, you didn't have any further questions? Okay. So what we'll do is, we'll open the public hearing. I do want to thank everyone from the public from attending tonight, so we can hear what you have to say. We do have just under 30 speakers tonight. And everyone is allowed up to three minutes, so I ask that each one of you respect the timeline, limit, so we have enough time to get through all the, the speakers. So, let's go ahead. I'm opening, we're opening the public hearing.
Okay. So we have 27 speakers. I will be calling several down at a time. Please line up at each of the speaker podiums. And please state your name clearly prior to beginning your comments. Gigi Jackson, Diana Bentley, Julia Sajica, apologies if I mispronounce your name, Anna Gendler, Peter Zofsi, Chris Lahage, and Iori Suzuki. Go ahead, get started.
Good evening, Chair Perkins and Commissioners. My name is Gigi Jackson, and I am a homeowner of Huntington Beach since 2008, currently living in my home for the past six years since my retirement. HDC has stressed the importance of transparency engaging the entire community, which includes lower-income and special needs households. The city has shown commitment and dedication by holding many public meetings, posting all comments, including notices and links to draft, to the draft Housing Element 6 cycle in its community newsletter, and social media, as well as Housing Element drafts on the city website. We know that there remains some misinformation regarding the housing element. Despite this work by the city, there is misinformation among our residents as shown at recent city council meetings, during public comments regarding specific sites in this housing element. A common comment that was, that was made was that affordable housing will bring down property values and increase crime in our neighborhoods. There is research that contradicts these opinions. Even when we think about these issues, we must ask ourselves, isn't it better that someone has a safe, affordable dwelling rather than living on a couch or in a car to make our neighbors safer and more attractive? There are many studies to support the benefits of affordable housing in a city. Here are a few. Affordable housing decreases crime, increases property values. June 8, 2022, UCI School of Social Ecology Study. Bloomberg News, what does affordable housing do to nearby property values? May 2, 2022, by Sarah Holder. Follow-up, a new Urban Institute study examined low-income housing in Alexandria to look for new answers to an age-old question. Maybe we may need more outreach needs to be happening with residents through housing fairs, town halls, social media, and all forms of sources of communication from the city. I support the city's effort with scheduled town halls in the next few weeks to make this, this information clear to all the residents of Huntington Beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Please line up at both podiums.
Chair Perkins and Commissioners, my name is Diane Bentley, and I'm a 21-year resident of Huntington Beach. And I'm here to speak in support of the housing element that's been described. Creating affordable housing has been shown in studies to decrease crime and increase property values. A recent study of the Affordable Housing Program in Irvine, California, has shown that property values went up when the city increased affordable housing stock. It makes sense that when people are not destitute, that they are camping in parks or sleeping in their cars, there is less likelihood of crime. The atmosphere in a city is much calmer and more positive, and it becomes a place where people want to purchase a home or rent an apartment. And when a city like Huntington Beach supports the statewide goal of adequate housing, we can maintain local control with city council's approval of the Housing Element document and without the state dictating our city's outcomes. Supporting rational planning is not only the right thing to do, it supports everyone's interests, financial and otherwise. Thank you.
My name is Iori Suzuki, a Huntington Beach resident with a home in Edwards Hill, and the president of our HOA. On behalf of myself and our neighbors, I'm here to address the proposed development of the Ellis-Golden West Estate residential plans. I would like to refer to the previously published Ellis-Golden West specific plan adopted June 1989. It most recently revised in April 2018. This master plan from 33 years ago provides detailed requirements for its development. Since 1989, eight different developers have created a community of over 300 homes, grouped into eight homestead associations. Each developer precisely followed the detailed requirements of the city's master plan in building out three quarters of Edwards Hill. Our HOAs have diligently maintained this neighborhood in accordance with the city's design mandates. Families have invested in these homes with the understanding, any reliance, that the entire block would eventually be built out to conform with the other homes on Edwards Hill. That's because the city's original plan said so repeatedly, in 1989, 1995, twice in 2002, and finally in 2018. So now, after 33 years, the residents suddenly confront the specter of a large, multi-story, multi-tenant building with no space for adequate parking to be suddenly proposed for the middle of our community. If you drive along Golden West in each direction from Edwards Hill, there are no such multi-story buildings for miles. We have equestrian stables, parks, and two shopping centers. We are otherwise surrounded by single-family homes. To proceed with this project is to create a building that will literally tower over and stick out like a sore thumb in this part of Huntington Beach. Why? Let me quote a few sections of the city's original plan. Prior to the project approval, the Planning Commission or the city council shall also consider the following. Projects shall be in conformance with the specific plan and the adopted design guidelines for the area. Architectural features and general appearance of the proposed development shall enhance the orderly and harmonious development of the area or the community as a whole. For a building permit to be approved, the use of the property shall remain the same, and the dwelling unit density shall remain the same. So how is the city's new proposal anywhere close to matching what it has been saying for the last 33 years? How does the city explain to homeowners who relied on those words that it's suddenly changed its mind? The most troubling aspect of this is that we have homeowners in our community whose homes are but the subject lot, and they receive no notice of these plans and remain unaware until recently. I would respectfully ask the Planning Commission to reevaluate what is being proposed for the subject land, and to take the necessary time to hear from your residents, and consider what is fair and just from a development standpoint. Thank you.
Next speaker, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Anna Gendler. I'm here to speak against low-income, high-density housing. I'm a resident in Huntington Beach for over 20 years. In the last few years, I already observed negative changes that such projects brought, such as influx of criminal activity, homelessness, and traffic, and lowering of property values. Before I moved here, I lived in LA. And what a scary place that is. I went to school, where as a child, I was often, came home crime because of constant physical and verbal abuse there. And I know firsthand what it is that those, firsthand what it is that those type of, type of communities are. Why, that's why I don't want to bring this plague to my city, Huntington Beach, and have it spread like cancer here. You, the city council members, elected officials, supposed to represent local citizens of this community and their best interests, and instead, you're going for your own immediate personal and financial gains. That's shameful. Why do you want to destroy this beautiful city and ruin life for its residents, and turn it into a LA-like dumpster for all kinds of criminals? I ask you to please carefully consider effects of building such projects here and vote against high-density housing. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Perkins and Commissioners. My name is Chris Lahage. I'm a resident of Steeplechase Circle on Edwards Hill. I respectfully speak to oppose the approval of zoning text amendment number 22006, which aims to allow and encourage high-density housing units within the Ellis-Golden West specific plan 7, a use that is incompatible with the area's current use, infrastructure, and character. The neighborhoods surrounding the proposed SP7 featured single-family and multigenerational homes, characterized and encircled by the riding trails of one of the only coastal equestrian centers in northern Orange County. Horses and their riders walk along, around, and across our streets. Seacliff Elementary is situated along the bottom border of the community, with parents and children frequently using the residential roads and sidewalks to go to and from class. Still more, students walk or ride their bikes southward towards Huntington Beach High School. The continual, the continually revised urban forest north of Ellis continues to draw more and more residents despite its less than 10 parking spots. Events put on at Central Park or at the Equestrian Center further exacerbate this problem, leading to the overflow of passenger vehicles of large logistical vehicles into the neighborhoods adjacent to SP7. The intersection of Golden West and Ellis features what many know as the longest traffic light in the city, even in moderate traffic. Finally, the highly trafficked and highly sped section of Ellis between Edwards and Golden West has no crosswalks, stop signs, and the urban, I'm sorry, or traffic signals despite the residents needing to cross this section to access Central Park and the urban forest. The addition of more vehicles into this community will only increase the risk to pedestrians and pets and passengers while straining an already precarious traffic and parking situation. In recognition of the current uses and highlighted infrastructural limitations, it makes no sense as the site of a project that the city's adequate sites, that the city's adequate site analysis likens to Pacific City Apartments due to its vast contiguous, contiguous lot size. A project of that scale will completely erase the pastoral and open personality of this community. Furthermore, Emily Ann Brindle, the longtime majority owner of the land within the proposed SP7, has submitted to the city that it has always been her intention to work with the community and neighbors to develop the land in a harmonious way. She opposes the proposed changes. The process for this proposal is completely contrary to these wishes. Most of my neighbors learned of this proposal through word-of-mouth, social media, and political advertisements recently. I urge you-
Thank you. Time's up.
I'm gonna go ahead and call a few more people to come down. Please come down and get in line at each of the podiums. Galen Pickett, Richard Bailey, Patricia Goodman, Gerald Chapman, Alini Hapisus, I'm probably, I apologize, Robert Kramer, and Cindy Barrios.
Good evening. My name is Julia Cheka, and my husband and I own a home that directly backs up to the proposed site for high-density housing. I would like to say, we are within a stone's throw to the Brindle property and receive zero notification of this proposal. My children attend Seacliff Elementary, and my husband owns a small business that is in very close proximity to the proposed site. My husband came to this country with very little and has worked hard his entire life to be able to provide this home for our family. We purchased our home in 2013, contingent on knowing what would eventually happen to the land directly behind our home. Changing this plan by rezoning and building high-density, high-rise housing is equivalent to a slap in our face. Rezoning this property will also directly impact the aesthetic of our neighborhood, our horse trails, and not to mention, it will dilute the quality of education at our local elementary school due to the natural influx of children that will come in. I humbly ask that you guys reconsider this building proposal of high-density housing behind our home. The HB community does not want this. Thank you.
My name is Peter Zoffrey, and I live on Polo Circle and was commonly referred to as Edwards Hill. I'm here tonight in opposition to the zoning overlay referred to more commonly as the Brindle Thomas property on Golden West Street. I'm requesting that you hold your recommendation to the city council until we have time to review, comment, and discuss your proposition as it relates to the overlay. In your EIR report, you indicated that the, that the alternative was selected and discussed in a manner to foster meaningful public participation. I live within our near vicinity of the property, and me nor any of my members were invited to participate. In addition, a supplemental EIR and SEQA was prepared to the original zoning done back when the master plan was developed. In reading the objectives of the EIR, the objectives are significantly different. The focus of the previous report was on complementary product, which is low-density and equestrian, while the focus in your current plan is high-density, low-income housing mixed with moderate and high-income dwelling units. The current plan of the zoning will increase the dwelling units up to 1,400 units based upon the density you discussed in your own report. In order to make such a change, I- In order to make such a change, I believe that a full EIR and SEQA needs to be prepared from scratch as traffic, school capacity, the effect on the stables, as well as other services are all not adequately addressed. For example, if you put 1,400 units on the property, your plan calls for minimal parking. Even if you include one space per dwelling unit and there are two cars per dwelling for residents and their visitors, there are 700 cars looking for parking spots in our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is not gated, and our main street's Quarter Horse and Saddleback are in the general plan to go through that property. Our neighborhood will have to absorb those parking spots and traffic. We have no sidewalks. Our children will be put in harm's way by that much traffic. A member of our... A number of our streets already do not support parking since they are fire lanes, so parking is already limited. Your plan does not address these issues except to say that you will reduce trips by limiting parking so people who do not have cars or expected to be at car share, use mass transit, or cycle. This property is not close to the freeway, to substantive businesses, or any other services. With no real plan to solve the problem, you're going to build a product that will congest the neighborhoods and perform a disservice so those that need the transportation most, the people that are low-income. I have no time to discuss the impact on schools. As a result of the 1,400 additional students, 1,400 additional students, the effect of the house is due to noise, pollution caused by the additional runoff, water usage, utilities, et cetera. You need to hold off approval until you resolve these issues. The SCAG provides... You've overstayed the SCAG by 7,000 units. Losing the Brindle property will have absolutely no effect on those requirements. Not building it will not matter, is the issue.
My name is Galen Pickett. Honorable Chairperson and members of the Commission. I am not a psychiatrist, and the popular definition of insanity as trying something again and again is probably not a valid criterion of the DSM-V. But I do have a lay understanding of phobia, an unreasonable fear insensitive to and wildly out of proportion to actual hazards and dangers. We have what looks to me to be a Rena phobia in this city, an unreasonable fear that the planning department is incapable of prudent planning for our community, an unreasonable fear that you commissioners are somehow in the pockets of shadowy developers, and an unreasonable fear that any planning for an increase in housing in this city will ruin our lifestyle and city. This fear is clearly unreasonable. I need look no further than the last time this commission and the city council amended the housing element to comply with state law. In the December 19 to the February 2020 timeframe, this commission and the council voted to approve an affordability overlay that brought us into compliance with state requirements. All manner of outlandish and disastrous effects were to have flowed from that vote. We were told we were going to become LA. We were going to become Santa Monica, when in reality, the main outcome of that process is a 40-odd-unit affordable housing development for seniors on an unused plot of land behind the Denny's near Five Points. Indeed, the value of my house increased only 10% in value in the period in which our housing element was not in compliance. It's about 2% year over year. It's up over 67% since rationalizing the housing element in February of 2020. I don't see how you're going to destroy my house, my value of my investment, with a planning document. For reasons unknown, there is an unreasonable and loud element of this city that has sought to create a panic and a phobia of all things Rena-related. The only thing I fear is that the planning function of this city is being taken over or could be taken over by Sacramento. And then we can all look for those 50-story condo towers at the water's edge. Approve this housing element to preserve our property value and our quality of life and our city and our local control.
Good evening, Chair Perkins and Commissioners. My name's Pat Goodman. I live in Huntington Beach, and I believe that the proposed housing element addresses the housing needs of our community over the next eight years and lays a roadmap on how we might achieve this goal. In past cycles, Huntington Beach exceeded the housing assessments for moderate and above-moderate income housing. Yippee. Sadly, affordable housing was not built to the required assessments. The need is evidenced by overcrowding, exorbitant rents, inadequate parking, and blight. I believe that this document identifies sites that meet low and very low-income allocation numbers. They are dispersed throughout the community and close to transit and other resources. This document offers a wealth of information about our city, as did the presentation tonight, our past efforts, who lives here, what the housing needs are, programs to address housing needs. It's important for all of us to know the responsibilities and challenges our city faces to address the housing needs of its residents and that we do not act alone but with other agencies within the confines of the law. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Rick Bailey. I've been an Edwards Hill resident for about 20 years. When our kids were young, we chose that neighborhood because it was an uncrowded living environment and had a high quality of living. During my professional career, I was the Boeing Huntington Beach Site Director from 2005 to 2007. Tonight, I'm asking the planning commission to not advance the RH30 overlay for the Ellis-Golden West specific plan. That specific plan never contemplated high-density housing, particularly adding 1,400 to 2,000 units, we've heard about, which would be 4,000 to 6,000 people. With less than 1,000 residents in that area right now, that'd be a multiplier of four to six times the people in this small area. My concern is that we current residents have not been given adequate notice and visibility into assessments and analyses on things such as safety, education, infrastructure, traffic, and environment. And now I'm hearing that we won't be... If this overlay is done, we won't have access to those. Methods like basing those assessments on supplements of the prior plan and not doing a bottoms-up analysis properly reflecting this huge change in the planned use are invalid and cannot be allowed. The planning commission must ensure that proper analyses are done and complete, are readily available to the residents, and that we have an opportunity to review and publicly comment them prior to approving this overlay. That has not happened. I wanted to look at housing metrics for Huntington Beach, so I used a tool I'm familiar with, the OC Equity Map from the Orange County Healthcare Agency. It provides the Social Progress Index for cities, which is 54 separate measures, and I provide you a copy of the summary. Huntington Beach is actually in good shape for housing needs. However, underperforming areas stood out for me. Personal safety, water and sanitation, and access to information and communication are all red. Those are basic infrastructure needs. This reinforced to me there are significant risks in these proposed projects. Complete and current studies in police and fire support, schools, water and power, infrastructure, traffic, and parking and environmental impact must be done before the projects are even considered. School and infrastructure plans cannot be delegated to a developer and done after the approval. That's a recipe for failure and one that we don't get to review, as evidenced here. I view the planning commission as having three responsibilities: improve our qual... Protect and improve our quality of life, and stand up and stop projects that have incomplete analysis or adverse outcomes. It's time for the planning commission to stand up and stop the Ellis-Golden West specific plan overlay.
Hello, everyone. My name is Robert Kramer, resident on Alameda Circle in Edwards Hill. Moved in probably the toughest time one could, March 15 of 2020, from LA County, from Hermosa Beach. When myself and my wife made the decision to move to Huntington Beach, there were four main decisions, four main factors that chose us to come to this neighborhood: safety, schooling, convenience, and access to parks. Safety: The last two years that we've been residents, our neighborhood has experienced, on average, one B and E per month, which is a shockingly high number. To think that we're gonna add 1,400, 1,500 units and that that number go down seems likely not possible. Schooling: Schooling class size. Our home is a stone's throw away from Seafly. If a class size right now is 22 to 25 students per teacher, likely to go up to 30 students per teacher. That's an increase of 20%. That's a significant number for our students to have more lack of attention from teachers. Convenience: The proximity, low traffic, lot easier to get to the freeway versus a community like Hermosa Beach in LA County. Adding 1,500 units, how many cars is that? That's gonna increase everyone's commute time. Lastly, convenience to parks, the proximity, the lack of crowding in parks in comparison to LA County is significant. That was a big deciding factor. We have a five-year-old son. Being able to get to these type of parks, not have... Not be overrun with people, that was a big perk for us. The fact that all of these things could and be... Could be changed in effect by 2206 and 2207 is why I'm here speaking strongly against it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Aleni Hapisus, and I would like to read an article written by Tristan Justice and edited for time. "The American West is Facing Its Longest Drought in 1,200 Years, Presenting the Nation With Its Worst Water Crisis Since the Dust Bowl of the Early 20th Century." "The Colorado River Basin, which operates as a lifeline for 40 million people across seven states, is drying up. The situation is growing increasingly dire. State and local governments implement mandatory water cuts that are only expected to become more severe as the drought continues. Lakes Mead and Powell, the nation's two largest reservoirs, are running so low that each is on the verge of quote-unquote Deadpool status, wherein their respective dams will no longer produce power. In California, the last in line with claims to the Colorado River, more than 6 million residents in the southern half of the state have remained under water restrictions since the 1st of June. And according to the U.S. Drought Monitor as of August, the entire state of California remains under drought conditions with more than 97% of the state suffering conditions considered severe. These conditions are unlikely to reverse. California dry periods have lasted 200 years, and the present drought only began in 2000. Los Angeles in particular will not be able to rely on the Colorado River much longer, though that's where the city gets half its imported water, and the snowpack in the Sierra Nevada is shrinking. California is the nation's most populated state with one of the longest coastlines. Despite supplies drying up, California Water officials vetoed plans for 1.4 billion desalination project in May, which would have offered LA residents 50 million gallons of potable water by next year from the Pacific, and the Huntington Beach desalination plan failed to pass as well. There's no reason to have scarcity of water in one of the richest states that's existed in the entire world. No nation on earth has been as successful at transforming seawater into drinkable resource as Israel, half of which exists in an arid region of the Middle East. This has allowed them to produce 20% more water than it needs. Israel's desalination efforts have been so successful that they've attracted interest from their desert neighbors. There is no reason that California, being on the technological frontier, can't play a major role in the global desalination trade. We should be pioneering desalination technologies. In fact, we have an obligation to do so. Please tell me, especially Mr. Rodriguez, who opposed the Huntington Beach desalination project, how we are going to provide water to the existing residents of Huntington Beach, let alone to 13,368 units you want to approve? No on any high-density housing on the Brindle-Thomas property, or for that matter, anywhere else in Huntington Beach. We have no water, and that should scare you. Let's fix our water infrastructure first before building housing that stacks us like matchsticks in a matchbox. Thank you."
My name is Gerald Chapman. I'm here to speak to something that several of the speakers have brought up, and that's the traffic and the parking consequences of this if it is eventually built out to the size that you're proposing to allow. If there... One of the things that's going to happen in order to get affordable housing is to limit the number of cars or the number of parking spaces that are there in the project. It doesn't... It will not say anything about whether or not the people can own cars, and the only place for them to park is on the streets within the quarter section. I invite you to come out when school opens and closes at the school in our neighborhood and watch what happens with the traffic. Your traffic engineer can tell you, it's a nightmare out there. People don't want to go across Garfield to get to the school, so they come across Ellis and race down Quarter Horse to the end, to the barrier at the end of the street to let their kids off. In the morning and afternoon, Quarter Horse is a racetrack. We have no sidewalks up there. That's one of the wonderful things about this neighborhood is the fact that we don't have sidewalks. If all of the public streets have cars parked on them, the children going to school that walk to school or ride their bicycles are gonna be forced to be out in the center of the street with the cars. And I hope that you don't want to have to deal with a child getting injured or, heaven forbid, killed out there because of affordable housing. I'm not against affordable housing, but it needs to be done according to the rules that are set. And to try and circumvent it by saying that notification didn't... Written notification didn't need to be done because the... Because of the number of units out there, that's crazy. These are three separate areas. They're three separate actions that you're asked to take, and there should have been notice before this... Before this meeting even took place. So, thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and call the following speakers to come down. Please line up at each of the podiums. Diane Kootinsky, Shirley Detloff, Denise Menachello, Martha Moro, Ari Zakubian, Solomon Duñaro... Sorry. Greg Strayer, and Viet Hong.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Barrios, and I'm here tonight to address the proposed affordable housing overlays for the Ellis-Golden West as well as the Holly-Seafly specific plans. I understand that Huntington Beach is required by the state to meet its Rena quota and that establishing the RH overlays within the specific plans will meet that requirement. Unfortunately, amending the site plans will have effects that don't seem to have been taken into full consideration. The Ellis-Golden West quarter section was designated by the city as a focus of special planning due to its unique characteristics, including natural resources, equestrian activities, and estate residential development. Strict guidelines were established for all development with the area, within the area, most of which will convey to the RH overlay. One of the biggest concerns to residents is the building height restriction of 35 feet. This is mentioned in Sections 4C and 5E, and by my reading, though I am no expert, and clearly by the reading of many of the other residents, neither of those sections appear to apply to the RH overlay, so I would request that that is reviewed and perhaps clarified. Another key concern is the limited-use zoning of the encyclopedia lots at the back of the property, which was also mentioned earlier. Currently, it only allows for green space and recreational uses. However, there are no assurances that this will remain unchanged. Should the area be rezoned to allow for through-traffic, it will greatly reduce equestrian access and pose safety concerns for students walking or biking to Seafly Elementary. Safety is not the only concern regarding Seafly. The impact of high-density development within the Ellis-Golden West site and adjacent Holly-Seafly sites at Garfield and Golden West will be enormous. Unlike some of the other high-density developments that appeal to college students and young professionals, Seafly is an area with strong appeal for families. Given the acreage of the proposed sites and the maximum amount of development allowed, if only 8% of those dwellings have just one elementary-aged child, Seafly will need to absorb well over 200 additional children. That's more than increasing class sizes. This will result in significant overcrowding that could cost hundreds of thousands of dollars in long-term portable rentals or trigger redistricting of the same families who were just forced to move schools when Perry was closed. School impact fees cannot minimize the effect this instability will have on our youngest and most vulnerable citizens. Please do not move forward with the site plan amendments until HBCSD has had a chance to fully examine the potential impacts to the infrastructure, students, and staff of our public schools. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Diane Kootinsky. I have lived in Seafly for 30 years. I have raised my four children here and lived with my husband here for 30 years. I have raised my four children here and lived with my husband here for 30 years. I have paid my taxes as well as the Melrose tax. I have been a community volunteer for this community, earning a gold medal from President Bush and President Obama for my community service. I still volunteer to this day because I love Huntington Beach. I am also a designer and a realtor. I have worked with city planning commissions in the past. I am aware of the traffic impact this will have to our community. I am just curious why you would put four six-story buildings in this location when you have several other locations that you could put it to? There are several choices. What are you going to tell the parents who have worked very hard to purchase homes so that their children can attend Seac Cliff Elementary School? After all, the school is one of the main factors when choosing a home. You and I both know you will have to rezone Seac Cliff Elementary School boundaries. And again, what about the additional traffic to the school area? How many more bus stops will you be adding? How much more public transportation will you be adding? The apartments simply do not work here architecturally. There are no other apartment buildings in Seac Cliff. Why would you just dump apartments here? I don't get it. The simple need to put it in another area. The sad thing about this whole thing is I am very connect volunteer in this community, and I know what's going on. I heard about this two and a half weeks ago, and I just heard you guys talking tonight that you've been talking to Golden West College about their buildings. Why haven't you been talking to the parents and the families of Seac Cliff? Thank you very much.
Good evening, Chair Perkins and members of the City Council. My name is Shirley Detloff, and I have lived in Huntington Beach for over 50 years. When the housing element was being reviewed many years ago, I was a part of the Citizens' Committee which reviewed it. I was also a planning commissioner for four years. I have read the current housing element, and I am here today to let the commissioners know that I feel that the housing element was well done under considerable scrutiny by citizens and, of course, the state, which had to approve the draft so that it could move forward to you and to the City Council. There were several meetings which were open to the public for their input and participation. I'm urging you to approve the document. It was carefully and professionally done. I think that we should all remember that this is a plan that meets the state standard, but still must be a plan would have to meet the city's standards. Every proposed use of land described in the housing housing element would have to have reviewed by the planning staff to meet the city's standards, and many of the questions that have been proposed tonight may be answered during that process. It would need an interested builder builder, as these properties would not be built by the city, so there are many steps still to take. Some have said that the state has overstepped their jurisdictional boundaries, and in some situations, I must agree with those that make that charge. But the fact is, the state has been tested many times in the courts and by us and other communities, and for the most part, the state has won. Now, what would happen if we could not approve the housing element? Several things, and we have seen that the state does take action. Case in point, when the City Council decided to amend the Beach-Eddinger corridor specific plan, which reduced the density of future projects, we could not meet our RENA requirements. This came about because citizens were concerned about the high density they saw in the new projects on Eddinger Avenue. However, a lawsuit was filed against the city. It was determined that because of our actions, we could no longer accommodate our housing needs, and we were out of compliance with our general plan. If we do not have an approved housing element, several other actions can be taken. We could face consequences such as fines and fees, funding disqualifications, mandated compliance, suspension of local land use power, court approval of housing develops, and a moratorium on all permits. We would not be in control of our own decision-making process. Let's face the reality of the situation, support the work done by your staff, and vote yes on this proposal bought before you. Lawsuits are costly and have not been successful. However, you must always remember that you have heard many valid comments this evening in presentation by the speakers. Your staff did an excellent job meeting the demands of the state. It was not easy, but they were very careful in doing, I think, a good job, and I hope that you will proceed carefully. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Martha Morrow. I'm a 30-year resident and original owner at Edwards Hill in Huntington Beach. For over 30 years, the Brendel Thomas Nursery property has been zoned on a specific plan for single-family residences, and when developed, the homes would be of like-kind and aesthetic quality compatible to our beautiful neighborhood. Now you are about to rezone the nursery property to place a high-density, human-packed, low-income, no-parking building in the middle of one of the most unique and beautiful family neighborhoods in all of Huntington Beach. This development will ruin our quality of life by bringing more endangerers through traffic on Quarter Horse and Saddleback, more parking issues to our already-stressed street parking, and more crime where we have been plagued with robberies and break-ins over the last couple of years. Placing high-density housing at the nursery property will ruin the value of our homes. Our homes are our lifetime investments. We have sacrificed, planned, and worked all of our lives to earn the right to live here. In one egregious move and without any thought as to the dire consequences to the tax-paying residents of Edwards Hill, you are taking all of that away from us. The residents of Edwards Hill are some of the highest-paying taxpayers in the city. We pay from $20,000 to upwards of $60,000 per year in property taxes. When our properties are devalued, it means millions of dollars less in taxes to the city. Did you consider that the city tax base would be greatly diminished because of this proposal? You are importing and subsidizing low-income renters who have no stake in the city and will put additional strain on our already strained city services, police, fire, schools, and infrastructure, and devaluing the properties of those taxpayers who foot the bill for these services. How does that make any sense? The Brendel Thomas Nursery property is a completely inappropriate site for a multi-storied, low-income property. This plan is a disaster, not only for us on Edwards Hill, but for all the small businesses and other family residential properties that you intend to destroy throughout the city. The city is betraying us by changing the specific plan for our beautiful neighborhood, which we have relied on for 30 years. I ask you to reconsider and do not include the Brendel Thomas Nursery in the specific plan zoning overlay proposal. Thank you.
I'm not quite as prepared as everyone else with all the facts, but I just came to tell you how absolutely blindsided our neighborhood was approximately 10 days ago when we heard through the grapevine, through neighbors and social media, that this possibility might happen in an area that we purchased over 32 years ago. In fact, it's been 32.
Ma'am, ma'am, can we have your name, please?
Oh, sorry, Denise Minicello. We moved into onto Horseshoe Lane 32 years ago. We bought our house off of a blueprint. We have assumed forever that the property that Mr. Brendel and Mrs. Brendel owned would eventually be sold and like-type housing would be put in that area. And Mr. Brendel, I can tell you, would absolutely roll over in his grave if he knew that this meeting was even being held. I believe that his wife truly is concerned about what's going to happen to their property. They loved our neighborhood. Please consider that this is this will potentially hit the value of our houses incredibly. Most people in that area, we do have young families, but a lot of us bought early and were coming to our retirement age. This was considered as part of our retirement, and now the thought of the reduction in our property value as being maybe even up to 50% is staggering. And I would hope that you would consider the fact that we all bought there thinking that this was going to be a property that would hold its value, it would remain as it is, which is, I think, a beautiful area that Huntington Beach should be incredibly proud of, and to take that and change it on us without notification, I think, is something that maybe you need to relook at. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Greg Strayer. I'm also here to discuss the Brendel property. My wife and I have also lived in Edwards Hill for 30-plus years. I just want to make a few comments about the the way we found out about this project. Six weeks ago, I got a letter in the mail. My wife puts it on my chair. It was from the City of Huntington Beach. Opened it up, and it was from the Planning Commission. It was about putting in a new cell tower behind the fire station. I read it, says we're going to have public hearings, come by and make comments. I thought, gee, we need cell phones. Great, you know, here we are, Larry, two weeks ago. Word of mouth comes that this meeting is coming up before the City Council concerning rezoning of Brendel, the Brendel property. We had nothing in the mail. Everybody in this room, despite what's been said in front of you tonight, received nothing, so no notifications. This was all during COVID, so people were not traveling around as much. We had nothing in the mail. We heard of no public hearings. We've been scrambling for the past two weeks to to find out what's going on and what to do about it, find out what the plans are. And in researching this, I came across this document put out by the city of by the State of California called "The Citizens' Guide to Planning," put out in 2001. And I'll read for you this section about zoning. It says, "Local Planning Commission and the City Council or County Board of Supervisors must hold public hearings before a property may be rezoned. Hearings must be advertised in advance and noticed mailed directly to surrounding property owners." This was not done. This was not done, and the people were so I think that the process, the process that you did to come to this conclusion did not involve the neighbors who are most impacted by it. We're not opposed to affordable housing in appropriate areas. This is not an area for affordable housing. Thank you.
My name is Reece Akubian. Thank you, guys, for taking the time to speak and and get your points across. I completely oppose the the Brendel property site from having high-density homes, and the real the number-one reason I'm here is because I have been trying to reach out to you and you and you and you to sit and have a meeting to discuss the issue at hand with the Brendel Thomas property. My telephone number is area code 949-254-0745, and I'm actually just hoping for a phone call back that we can sit down and talk about this. I have some 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 big concerns, obviously very similar in line with what the the community community has already spoke about, but one one being why the EIR is not complete and why it is a partial EIR. For some sort of a change like this, it just doesn't it does not make any sense to me. There are so many items that you guys continue to address. The document that was presented is, I mean, it is beautiful. It looks really, really good, but it makes no sense in that area, absolutely no sense. We have spent the last 35 years doing whatever is possible to get to Edwards Hill. That's been our dream, our goal, our life, and to see a property being proposed for high density in that area is truly, truly despicable. So if you guys can please, somebody can call and schedule a time to communicate. I think you guys have heard enough people communicate their concerns. There's no trust right now, and as a planning committee, we rely on people like you, committees like you, to protect us. We also are being told that the City of Huntington Beach, which, of course, has challenges with the state, and there's requirements that you have to meet, and we understand that, but we're being told that the City of Huntington Beach is exceeding the requirements. Is this true? It makes no sense to Huntington Beach residents if this is actually true. Why are we going for 30% rather than 20%? If we're being held to the requirement of the state, why are we exceeding those limits? I'm hoping the information that we've been receiving is false, which is why I'd like a call back. Thank you.
We have the following speakers. Viet Hong, Solomon DuJoro, Karen Carroll, Adam Chamar, I may have mispronounced that, James Sharoff, Yune Salsin, I'm Yune Salsin, sorry, Brian Salsin, Byron Konstantinidis, and Dennis Holloway. Please come down.
Good evening, Chair Perkins and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Karen Carroll, longtime resident, retired from the High School District in UCLA. I moved to Huntington Beach as a newly-married, first-time homeowner. I was a science teacher with a master's master's degree and eight years' experience, and my husband was an engineer. Together, we were above the median household income category at that time. We had another advantage, specifically our parents' support. We were privileged. As retired persons, we continue to enjoy where we live and how we live. It would be fine for us if things never changed in our lifetime, as if there were no one else but us to consider. We've got it good, and I would guess that most all of the persons in this chamber have it good as well. However, looking thoughtfully at the very well-researched housing element cycle, it is apparent to me that we do not represent the much greater percentage of Huntington Beach residents according to income and lifestyle. To get a better picture, let's only look at the census information for our employed adult residents. We don't even have to look at the seniors, those with disabilities, the unemployed, or part-time workers. The only subgroup I'm referencing tonight is that in the employment-based table that you saw in the presentation. The only, excuse me. Looking at this group only, we see that 62% of reporting individuals from in the census are designated as very low or low. For reference, individual salaries that qualify as extremely low are not even represented in the county mean salaries by occupation table. However, our housing element goes by household rather than individuals. We know that 62% of working adult individuals include those in shared housing, living with roommates, households with extended families, adult children living with parents, and so on. But this group also includes single parents and young people just entering the workforce in our city. For example, a beginning teacher in Huntington Beach will start with a salary defined as low income relative to the cost of living. Our teacher's monthly paycheck after federal and state taxes and retirement contribution would be about $3,200. Average rent for a studio or one bedroom at this time is about $2,200, which is 59% of the monthly check. He or she will be better off to marry well and find a reliable roommate. I'm hoping we are all willing to think out of the box of our own circumstances and accept that change is inevitable. We can't just freeze our current population.
Thank you.
This is about the future.
Mike, Master Paulo, also come down. Please come up to each of the podiums.
My name is Byron Konstantinidis. I live on Edwards Hill for the past 28 years. One of the main reasons we moved here was the information in the specific plan for the area that designated that entire block as being a low-density residential. We liked the neighborhood, and we raised three children there. Obviously, I'm opposed to the proposed development, not only for personal reasons, you know, that, you know, that people before me expressed very. people before me expressed very eloquently. I'm a, I was a geotechnical engineer, retired five years ago, and the past 40 years, I've done a lot of projects in Southern California. Believe me, I have never seen such a nonsense where somebody goes into an area that is surrounded by large, single-family homes and proposes to put a high-density, affordable, you know, house. It makes no sense, you know, for all the reasons that, you know, the previous speakers talked about. It just, I've never seen it. I've never seen it. It makes, and let me make it clear, I'm not opposed to affordable housing at all. And I'm not opposed to high-density housing either. But it makes no sense to put it there, right in the middle, surrounded all around by, you know, largest, you know, large-lot homes. It makes sense to put it in areas that are close to commercial developments. Bella Terra is a beautiful example of that. That area, you know, in fact, my company, you know, we were involved with some of those projects. And in fact, in the past five years before I retired, most of our projects were related to apartment complexes like that, including that one. It makes sense to do that in areas where you're close to shopping and you don't, you're not towering over, you know, single-family homes. So for that reason, and let me also repeat, as you can see, I wasn't prepared. I found out about this thing this past weekend and got a little more information today. So I came out just to express, you know, my opinion on this. I think it's very wrong of you not to notify the residents in the immediate neighborhood, and I hope that you can postpone your final decision until we are able to get more information and have, you know, a little bit more of a discussion. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Adam Shama. I'm an engineer, and I work with the city of Huntington Beach. I've done a lot of projects in the city. I'm opposing to the rezoning or changing the zoning of the Brendel Thomas properties from a technical standpoint. I think that locations will have a major environmental impact, traffic impact, and also living, impact on the standard living of this area. The site is too far from the 405. It's going to create a major traffic for those people that thousands of people coming to this area to drive to the 405, either on Golden West or go down to Ellis. It's a few miles to go. We have much better locations to consider closer to the 405 than the Brendel Thomas I just heard about this study and the evaluation. I think the environmental impact report should be evaluated, studied well, and see the impact of it before considering the voting on this property. Rezoning of this property, I think, is a big mistake from engineering standpoint, and I hope you guys reconsider. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dennis Holloway. I've been here since, I don't know, 1975. Grew up in the area of where I live now, which is on Edwards Hill. Always sought to get there. And my dad was like, that's the place to be. So we got there. But like a lot of other people in this room, it's like, surprise. Honestly, you don't know what to say. It's like, where did this happen? When did this happen? How did it happen? Well, sad that you guys have to deal with this stuff, because I know your back is up against the wall. But I don't think that changing our low-density into high-density is going to solve any of the problems that you guys are trying to figure out how to solve. Years ago, we tried to put a gate in, just as recently we tried to put a gate in, and the response that we got back was, from the city, was, it doesn't fit the general plan, and the general plan is not going to change. Now it appears that that plan is going to change. Previous speaker said it's been brought up on a number of occasions, I think it was the third speaker tonight, that it was brought up in the plan three or four times that this was not going to change. So now that your back's up against the wall, things apparently are going to change now. So I don't think that a reactionary decision, I don't think, is going to help the community of our community. I don't think Huntington Beach needs low-income, or, I mean, not low-income, no high-density housing in that space. And I had this observation a few days and a couple of weeks ago in the Wall Street Journal, and then here, according to the State of California Department of Finance, and I understand that all this stuff is because we have a housing crisis. Well, since 2011, California has experienced a negative net domestic migration. And that negative net domestic migration outweighs the international. So in 2021, we, California lost 173,000 people, and that trend is continuing. So if we have a housing crisis, is that the Brendel Thomas yard, is that where that housing crisis is going to be solved? I don't think so. I think it's going to be solved where those people are more needed, which would be, you know, along the beach edging your corridor. But I don't think changing our low-density to high-density is going to work.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm James Sharoff, and I'm on one of the boards of one of those HOAs. And it's, I don't understand how none of us knew about this, even though you have repeatedly told us that you've been discussing it publicly for 18 months and that you've sent out notices. How difficult could it really be to actually notify seven HOAs? That's just seven people that need to be notified, and then we could have gotten it out to our members? And as you can see, in just two weeks that we found out about it, look, how many people are already here complaining? Can you imagine if we actually knew about it for 18 months? I mean, this would have been going on for 18 months. You would have had us here for 18 months. So it's a little ridiculous to keep saying how, oh yeah, we talked about it, we talked about it. It was, everybody knew about this. No, we didn't. Had we known this would have been going on, and you guys would be very clear that... We're not against high-density housing per se, but this has been what we paid into. We paid Melrose for this. We upgraded this area through our Melrose taxes. And the whole plan was to put, like, houses in that area from the get-go. And then for you guys to come in and tell us, oh, we've been discussing it. You guys could have come here for the last 18 months and discussed it. Really? When do we get notified? I mean, I was never notified, and I'm on one of the boards. So I'm hearing it from someone else, you know, hear of mouth, saying, hey, why aren't you guys going to these meetings? And why didn't you tell us about it? And they're complaining to me as a board member why we didn't tell them about any of this. Well, we didn't know about it. So it doesn't make sense to make these changes. The other thing is, if you notice, no one's complaining about any of the other properties. All those other properties you talked about, there's not a single person here saying anything about those other properties. The only people here are complaining about that one property. It'd be so easy for you to remove that one property, and all of a sudden, all the complaints are gone. There's not a single person going to show up again. No one cares. We're happy. You know what? We understand the city needs to build this stuff. But this is what we paid into. We paid to have this, you know, we didn't pay for all those other little properties that you're talking about. I don't own anything of the Chuck E. Cheese. My kids went there as, you know, when they were little kids, but, you know, hey, I don't, I didn't pay for any of that. I just bought pizza there. I don't care, but we paid the Melrose tax to develop this land, and you guys are going to take it away from us. You know, just, if you, if you're smart about it, you'll just say, you know what? All those other properties are fine. This one we need to remove because too much public outcry. So simple to be done, and you still meet your needs. That's what my recommendation would be.
Hi, I'm Brian Salsen. Thank you for your time. I implore you to listen to the warnings on the Ellis-Golden West rezoning, not just for the sake of the loud stakeholders called residents and voters, also for the political survival of the ponds out there that will be sacrificed by Sacramento for this cause. The cure is worse than the disease. Two developments to slow the spread of poverty. I support affordable housing. I support lifting people out of poverty and into opportunity, but how do we achieve this? Do we pull everyone down, or do we lift people up? We decided all of the current plans were the cure, and what are the second-order effects? High-density affordable housing didn't come from the voters of HB. It was mandated from on high, brought to you by the same leaders who increased homelessness everywhere they presided. Can I have a home in Gavin Newsom's neighborhood? Will his friends that get oil buy it for me? The same people needed an app to tell the residents and tourists to know where to avoid the abundance of human waste on the streets of San Francisco. It's quite a metaphor for how to measure progress. If we could grade this governor with an emoji, I know which emoji I would use. If we care about the choices of the people in Huntington Beach, then it should be noted, we had a self-made, excuse my wokeness, Mexican-American member of the council who was overwhelmingly voted into office in spite of his bad boy of HB status, and he was, his family, allies of his political opponents, went after his family, and he was chased away. We should all be ashamed that we let this happen in our city. Cure for poverty is education. Some much smarter people than I have covered that topic well. Government plays a valuable role in prioritizing and nurturing education. Please don't let the cure to poverty be worse than the disease. Don't destroy education. Don't destroy the cure. We need an infrastructure plan just by itself. Education overcrowding is already worse than the disease in this case. But also, we've got water. Don't water more than three times a week. My aunts hate that one. What happened to the desalinization plant? The state stopped that. Electricity, don't plug your electric car in during the day. Police, we, we have the best police department in the world, probably. How will it adapt? The only city that won safest city in the US more than HB was probably Irvine. Let's cheat off of the smart, good students instead of copying off of LA and San Francisco. Fire paramedics, how long will we wait for 911, and do we have time to do our hair and makeup before they come to stop the bleeding? Some other examples of when the cure is worse than the disease. Instead of moving the cargo ships from the broken supply chain out past Catalina, the government wants to just cut off oil and cut off a valuable source of income, which can go into education if you want. The experts tried to save us from coronavirus by stopping two-year-olds from socializing and eighteen-year-olds from seeing their friends for a year. As an engineer, I enjoyed not being around people. They're gross, but it's tough on the kids. Beware of the greater good in California that led to Democrats putting some of our best citizens in camps and destroying their lives. Don't destroy the cure. Thank you.
My name is Mike Masterpalo, been a resident here for a long time. Have the pleasure of planning supports with some of our lovely planning commission there. And, yeah, just wanted to make a couple of comments, just to urge using caution, pursuing with rezoning the Brendel Thomas site. It does not seem to fit the community's wants or desires at all. I just found out about this today myself. In between Realtor activities, just happened to flip it on, and so I did not come prepared. However, it reminds me of a situation I ran into recently where in Corona del Mar, they have a 5G tower that's embedded in a chapel that none of the neighbors know in the middle of a community, and it all of a sudden became a, known to the community and is being voted upon to be allowed in the next two weeks. Well, they had a meeting, and the community is able to speak up based on this knowledge. Well, they said that if we don't approve it, it's only going to get put down the street around the corner. Well, that's disingenuous at best, because Spyglass, the community, Encinitas, the city, voted to have no 5G towers in their towns. So there is power for people to vote and the community to have a say. And, you know, I would just say, take the time to hear the community and, you know, do not destroy that trust. Why are you changing the general plan after so much time, after so many, so many decades of people's lives being staked on that and their future generations? It wasn't to have it changed. And I think that we've seen, you know, enough words from the people that are prepared, that do live right next door to that community, to, you know, put pause in place there. You know, crime, you know, being an issue, I don't know that, you know, necessarily that over, you know, populating, putting low-density housing in certain cities is going to reflect in a market change. The market in real estate has only gone up exponentially in the last few years. It'd be very hard to sift that out and parse and see which part is, you know, not affected by, you know, a crime or property value, you know, devaluation happening, you know. And growing up here, you, you learned, you were around a lot of different people, a lot of different types, a lot of go-getters, a lot of people that just wanted to go to the beach. And so do I deserve a beautiful home on the beach if I don't work, if I didn't do that? Not necessarily. I think the community that built their lives around here through hard work is who you owe your allegiance to. It seems like it's not the right site. Put it, you know, somewhere else. I think the Westminster Mall plan looks like it makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Other ways to do it.
Final call for Viet Hong, Solomon Doyoro, and Eunice Salsen. We have no other speakers.
Okay. In that case, we will close the public hearing, and I would like to thank everyone who came tonight and participating and providing your input to the commission. So at this point, we will move on to deliberations among the commissioners. So I would like to open up for any commissioner to participate in that, and please do so by marking your view speaker's comment button. And we do have John Skodore to start off the conversation. Sure. And I'm actually just going to begin it with questions, and then later on, I'd like to just move into, you know, my thoughts and impressions and also some, some changes that I'm considering. But it's been made, one of the biggest things that's been, come up tonight is the public notification part of things. Now, as far as this whole process is concerned, we followed state law. We follow the minimum requirements of state law, and it is what it is. However, going forward, under this affordable housing overlay, there's going to be a lot of projects that will not require conditional use permits, namely those projects where the developer is proposing 20% affordable housing at the low and lower income levels. And because, and instead, they would be granted ministerial or by right approval. And that means that there won't be any public hearings, public review and comment, no CEQA, anything. Is there some way that we can somehow notify residents, whether it's within 500 feet or 1,000 feet of a property that's going to be developed into housing within these overlay zones?
Yes, we could do that, and if the planning commission wants to make a recommendation for an insertion into any one of the specific plans or zoning documents, we can.
Then later on, I'm going to have some proposal, proposed changes in a couple of areas to clarify where exactly this 20%, what I call the 20% overlay, 20% by right requirement applies. Commissioner Ray.
Thank you. I have a question for staff, first of all, on one of the attachments, the suggestions for approval for zoning text amendment 22-006 on the Brendel Thomas property. The last paragraph, number four, says the affordable housing overlay area is located along an arterial and would not encroach into existing established neighborhoods. So I'm wondering how that, what the thought process is on how you would envision that it would not encroach into the established neighborhoods?
Well, we would assume that the property, any future project, would take that, would take access or be able to take access from the arterial rather than through a local or collector's street.
So that would be, because when you look at some of the maps, obviously, some of the... the internal streets kind of dead end right at that property as if they're ready to go through the property. So I was just wondering how we can, at the time there is a project, because for all we know, it's still going to be zoned RL. So it could be estate-type of homes there. So it may not be as much of an issue. But if it does go with the overlay, I just want to make sure that, how can we make sure that it isn't, there is no encroachment?
You could make, I guess if you wanted to clarify, you could make a recommendation to amend that specific plan to add some sort of language that a new project pursuant to the overlay would take access from the arterial rather than a collector's street.
Okay, yeah, that probably would be something we'd want to do, and that would fit in with the findings for approval that way. Another item I have Chair Perkins is I wanted to see about doing a straw vote on something. Basically, what I'm looking at is the overall 13,368 RENA requirement. A lot of people in Huntington Beach feel that that's rather excessive, and what, including the California State Auditor, who had an issue with the RENA findings. Now, the role of the Planning Commission, we're not going to advise City Council on, necessarily on, here's what you have to do as part of our approval as far as legal issues. But my understanding is that we could look into having a straw vote on doing a minute action from the Planning Commission to the, to the City Council, basically asking the City Council to direct the City Attorney's Office to challenge this number in court. Is that something we can do as a straw vote?
Yeah. So can you, can you expound, though, on the State Auditor? Can you provide more context on what specifically was?
Last year, the California State Auditor reported that the RENA goals were not supported by evidence. So the numbers that they were coming up with in our case are 13,368. The report did not support that number.
Okay, so before we take a straw vote, what I'd like to do is ask the staff, are those numbers consistent with what other communities are proposing? Can you give us any more context on?
So the 13,368 number is the RENA. And based on all of those factors we talked about in the presentation that are required by HCD for the site's analysis, for example, only allowed to assume development at 80% of the max density, all these little things. It precludes from, for purposes of the housing element, assuming that each parcel or each site is going to be developed with the actual maximum number of units allowed. So it creates a buffer in the overall capacity for each income category and the total number of units overall. So by nature, the way they require you to analyze the sites provides this buffer in zoning capacity. For example, and this is something that every jurisdiction is seeing, for example, I looked at Beverly Hills Housing Element a week or two ago, and their, their RENA was around 3,100 units, and their capacity identified was around 8,500 units. So similar proportions, nearly three times their actual RENA assignment is what their zoning capacity was. So that's some background on the overall capacity.
Okay, and how does the state assign RENA numbers to each jurisdiction? Is it based on population, land area, what, how does that work?
Well, it's based on many factors. This time around, the six-cycle RENA is, was very different than the fifth cycle and previous cycles, which resulted in the RENA being much higher than it ever has been. So for example, the RENA for the sixth cycle was based on both existing need and projected need. So the existing need, they're basically saying is like a pent-up demand for housing, and that's caused by factors like overcrowded households, you know, people are doubling up, you know, multiple families are living together, or households are precluded from being created because, like, adult children remain living at home instead of going out and creating their own household and occupying a housing unit itself. So it's the existing need combined with the projected need for housing and, as well as a social equity adjustment. So jurisdictions that have areas designated high and highest resources received additional RENA units because of those factors in order to comply with the affirmatively furthering their housing statutory requirements. So that's an overall overview of the RENA.
And Chair Perkins, really quickly, sort of high level. HCD first comes up with a regional determination for the city's region, which is SCAG. It's 197 jurisdictions, six counties, and the HCD regional determination for SCAG was 1.3 million units, which SCAG disagreed with. And the Regional Council, which is made up of membership jurisdictions, voted to appeal or raise an objection of the regional determination number to HCD, which SCAG did. I think it was adjusted by a nominal amount, maybe a few thousand units, and that was HCD essentially has the final say on the regional determination. So now that SCAG has a little, around 1.3 million, they have to allocate it to all of the jurisdictions. Based on the methodology that they adopted, which the city opposed, objected to several times, they adopted a methodology that resulted in 13,000, over 13,000 units for the city. We did, throughout the RENA process, actually Nicole and I worked very closely with Michael Gates, Michael Vigliota, and the City Attorney's Office to raise several objections to the RENA methodology, as well as then after the RENA was adopted and allocated to the city, we filed an appeal of the RENA units, and that was also denied. And so, once you have the RENA allocation, that is your number, which is what the housing element's based off of. Once we received that, we immediately started, we pivoted and worked toward preparing a compliant housing element based on the RENA that we were allocated. I think what Commissioner Ray is asking is whether or not?
We're asking, I'm asking, for the City Council to direct the City Attorney's Office to challenge that number. I'm not saying not to have this number in, in our housing element, but go a step further and see about challenging. We stopped, we had some initial challenges, and then it was stopped.
So potentially, what you could do is pretty much after, maybe after consideration of this item, then you might want to take up this, if the Planning Commission determines as some sort of minute action, which is a recommendation memo to the City Council, but it's entirely up to the Planning Commission?
Okay. Yeah, and before we do a straw vote, I'd like the other commissioners to weigh in, just to make sure they're fully informed and they have their questions answered from staff so that they can make an informed decision. So I do?
I have a comment on?
Okay, go ahead.
On the State Auditor's report, he, they found that the numbers were incorrect, but they had actually understated the numbers that the state needed. It wasn't that the numbers were too high that they were asking for. They actually said that the methodology was flawed and that we needed more housing in the state.
So if I, Chair Perkins, if I may, I'll step in just a little bit here. Perhaps what we could do is, first I'll address, I think, what Commissioner Ray was looking for, which was something maybe similar to a discussion that was had at City Council level, I want to say a year ago, maybe April 2021. Councilmember Peterson at the time had agendized as an H item a discussion about whether the validity of the RENA action should be challenged separately. I think there's varying opinions on whether that's appropriate or not. I know that in the past, the City Attorney's Office has already opined that they felt that the validity of the RENA allocation was incorrect in an upward manner. And so that was a discussion that I believe was held in the past and discussed back in April 2021. What Commissioner Ray would be looking for, I believe, is not to test that out here at the Planning Commission, but to agendize that for the City Council with, you know, an ultimate recommendation one way or the other as to what the office should, the office of the City Attorney should do next. Is that right?
Yes, I'm just saying that the Planning Commission is, through a minute action memo, that we are recommending that this be discussed further in the courts by the City Attorney's Office.
Okay, so?
That we would be asking the City Council to do that.
Similar to last year, revisiting the issue alongside the housing element adoption?
Correct.
Do you have your, you look like you want to speak, but aren't you not?
Yeah, just, if we go this route, do we have, since it's not on the agenda, do we have to, number one, agree that we want to take the straw vote and then take the straw vote? Because I think we've done that in the past, or?
So I believe what we should, what might make sense here is to consider the items before you, which is the housing element recommendation, one way or the other. In conjunction with that, this is, it sounds like what Commissioner Ray is proposing has to do with the issues that are raised in the housing element discussion itself, and so it's not, it's not one of the communications that you're sending up directly connected to it, but it's an, it's an extension of the conversation that has come up through the public comments and the staff reports, et cetera, is, you know, look, you know, your baseline is the RENA allocation, so it would go together, in a sense, if you had decided that you wanted to send it up to Council that way. Right, but what you, what we would recommend is that you address the housing element recommendation ultimately, and then whichever way you decide, you may, you may have that sort of, as a minute action, a side note to add to the agenda.
And then one more question for staff. Currently, when there's a conditional use permit for a project, is it 500 feet or 1,000 feet where residents receive notice? Just for clarification, or depends?
500 feet.
500 feet, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Commissioner Skandura?
I don't have any questions to ask. I mean, all I can say is that I would oppose any straw vote on this Planning Commission to ask, to ask City Council to challenge in court the RENA numbers. I mean, first of all, as was pointed out by the staff, the city, the city has already appealed those RENA numbers. There was an administrative appeal process that was available to the city. They exercised that option, and that appeal was denied. And that, and once an appeal, once an administrative appeal like that is denied, it's very difficult to get courts to overturn that. There has to be very substantial evidence. And one of the interesting things is, was noted, yes, the State Auditor did say that the RENA numbers were inadequate, but not because they were too high, but because they were too low. So there's an old saying, be careful what you wish for. Those judges could very well increase our number way beyond what's already an extremely ambitious number. And then, you know, kind of dovetails on what City Council, what the City Attorney is saying, and that is, our job here is to decide on the adequacy of the housing appeal. It's not to tell City Council who to sue and who not to sue. If we want City, if we want the City Council to sue somebody, we have the ability to go to each of our individual City Council members and ask them to bring that up as an H item. But this is not the, we are not the place to be telling City Council who to sue and who not to sue, especially on an issue that's already been essentially decided upon. And especially with the City Council, which four of those seven members are going to be coming off in two months. So I mean, a straw vote would just be a waste of time.
I concur with that as well. So?
I concur. No straw votes either.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Ray.
Then, in lieu of a straw vote, what I'd like to do is, for the minutes, to note that my individual recommendation is that the City Council should direct the City Attorney's Office to challenge the RENA numbers in court.
Okay. Any other comments by commissioners? Commissioner Skandura?
Sure. Sure, and just I wanted to at least respond to a few things that came up in public hearing and some of the perceptions that have come out. One, and this is a very valid point, the fact that the RENA, the RENA goal is 13,368 units, yet this housing element, if implemented fully, would yield something like almost 21,000 units. Now, that was a question I asked way back when I reviewed the first draft of this, of this housing element about a year and a half ago. Why so, why so many units? And the reason is very simple, because all we're doing is providing the zoning, whether it's through a rezone or through a, through a overlay for that affordable housing, but it does not mean that projects will be built. At the end of the day, a developer has to buy the property from whoever the property owner is, and then they must build the project. We're going to be very lucky if even one-third to half of these unit, of these, of these properties get developed in the next seven or eight years. That's why it was important that we provide a lot more units than is needed, so we can at least be assured that we're going to make that goal, or at least we hope to, hope to assure that we make this goal. I think a perception that's out there is that by approving this housing element and the overlays and the rezones and all those kinds of things, it means that all of a sudden building is going to be happening on all, on all 378 different properties. And as I mentioned before, that's not going to happen. Instead, all we're doing is just setting the table. We're providing the zoning. We're providing the options. And we're doing it two ways. One, we're going to be rezoning three properties, just three properties, the Chuck E. Cheese property, the Frontier Yard, the, one of the ugliest pieces of property in all Huntington Beach, by the way, at Gothard and Gothard and Slater, and then a lumberyard just not too far from there. All the others are going to be subject to an overlay. And the way an overlay works is that the base zoning remains. So if the property is still industrial or commercial or low-density residential or what have you, that zoning is going to remain in place. However, a developer who buys that property under an overlay would have the option to be able to build housing units. Right now, with just a strictly residential, pardon, with a strictly commercial or industrial zoning, they can only build that type of use. So what this does is it provides that option, but it doesn't mean the developer is automatically going to build housing. They may just, you know, rebuild the industrial property or rebuild the commercial shopping center. So at the end of the day, all we do is set the table, but it's the builders who, the developers who have to build. City can't force them to do that. Obviously, the housing element's a difficult one for me, because I'm not a big fan of high-density development. I don't want to see high-density towers all up and down the city. But the thing I have to look at as a city official, as an appointed planning commissioner, is that we do need to have housing for our workforce. As one of the slides presented by the staff showed, this is housing for our workforce, the people who do all the different work, from people in the service industries all the way to high-tech professionals, government, government, government employees, firefighters, teachers, business entrepreneurs. The problem is, they can't afford a house in this city. The, the average house in Huntington Beach is over a million dollars. To be able to afford the average house, you have to make double, double the adjusted mean income, a quarter of a million dollars. That means you'd have to be among the highest-paid professionals out there. It's just crazy. And so what's happening to all these people in the workforce? Well, they're having to double up in rooms like my son is doing right now in Long Beach, or they have to commute long distances, two, three hours away. That's not right. We will lose our workforce. We will lose workers to other states because of that. We will lose our workforce, we will lose workers to other states because of that. So we need to have this affordable housing. Now, most of the people who spoke in opposition here are from the Edwards Hill area, and I understand why they're upset about this, they just heard about this, and already perceptions are out there that there's a big project on the, on the horizon there with huge towers on the old South Coast property. That is not the case. There have been some developers who have approached the city about saying, could we possibly build housing on that property? But no, no project has actually come forward, not even to the point where the staff can do a site plan review. The other thing is, I heard one of the speakers say, well, this is a rezoning of that South Coast supply property. It is not a rezoning of that South Coast supply property. It is actually, it is, again, an overlay property. At the end of the day, it's the developer who's going to decide whether to build three units per acre, you know, large estate-style houses like what exists in the neighborhood, or if they want to put the high-density development in there. Furthermore, the property is owned by Mrs. Brindle. Mrs. Brindle can decide who to sell it to at any time. If she decides she wants to sell it to a developer who wants to put low-density housing on there, she can do that. Nobody's going to force Mrs. Brindle to sell, to sell to some developer who's going to put high-density housing on there. So I think that's going to be very important. And then I think I heard a lot of perceptions about the project and what it's going to do and what it's not going to do. One has to see the property, project before they can make any kind of judgment, the designs, the plans, the mitigation measures, all of those other kinds of things. For me, you know, I don't see the problem with this. It would allow young, well-paid professionals and families to live in that area and to be able to enjoy the amenities that people in the Ellis Golden West area, Edwards Hill area, also enjoy. There's no reason we can't have that. And again, these are young professionals, well-paid people, who just simply can't afford a house in this city.
Please, Commissioner Adam.
Yeah, I have a, I want to, I don't know if it's a question, but I want to make sure I understand. It was brought up by somebody in public hearing about water supply, so I just want to make sure my understanding of water supply unavoidable impact. So the current EIR says that the city cannot guarantee there is sufficient water supply for the current housing element, and that's why it's been identified as unavoidable. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So it indicates that the full implementation of the RENA would increase in result of 2,905 acre-feet per year over the projected demands in the 2020 urban water management plan. The numbers are right, it's okay. For 22, from 2022 to 2030. It's not a huge amount, but it's certainly, it's not insignificant. So what that, all that's saying is that the 2020 urban water management plan does not account for the full RENA if all of the RENA was converted to, to a water demand, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then it also states that the urban water management plan identifies that there is, will be an increase in population within the city. And so obviously, increase in population within the city would increase water demand from purely population perspective, correct?
Yes.
And then it infers that the increase in the urban water management plan due to population would actually account for 54, 54% of the increased demand associated with RENA. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So then there's an unaccounted, or there's an unmet demand of 50, sorry, 46% if everything was fully developed from RENA, that's not accounted for by the urban water management plan, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I want to applaud the city and Kimberly Horn for making this statement and identifying as an unavoidable impact. I have seen and been a part of several cities who have identified that this is not an issue in Southern California, and that MODOC, our regional wholesaler, will just take care of this. So I'm really supportive of the city's approach of letting the state know that, that water supply and infrastructure are not always going to be sufficient for you. And I think the state has not respected, when setting these hazard requirements, I don't think they've respected issues like water supply and infrastructure, and they've just sort of said, just deal with it. So I appreciate the city putting this in the record, and I think it's the right thing to do. I do have questions about the 2025 urban water management plan and RENA, but I think I'll wait a few years to ask those. So thank you, Seth.
Okay. Do we have any other comments from commissioners? Vice Chair Costa Gilvan.
I just wanted to go into, I'm in support of the housing element update as it is. And specifically for the Ellis Golden West area and the Holly Triangle area, it makes sense to develop in that area because of the proximity to amenities that we have there. There's already, there's two shopping centers.
Please.
I think people have been misinformed also as it goes regarding high-rise towers being put in the area. There's a 35-foot height limit. There are already multifamily residential developments in that area. Your issue then with developing in the Edwards Golden West area is the 80-foot divide of Golden West, Golden West, when there are already multifamily residential properties right across Golden West and along Ellis and Garfield. That's, that's all I have for right now.
Okay. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you. First and foremost, I want to thank the residents who came to speak. Your concerns about property values to crime, to quality of life are definitely noted. I do want to address some of these concerns. First, the idea that affordable housing, the, the overlay will decrease property values is contrary to existing development that happens in low-income communities. Most of the time when developments happen in low-income communities, they end up displacing current residents because of the uplifting of the property values in the surrounding area. In my experience, you know, I think we have a fiduciary duty also to ensure that we have full control over our planning department, and that will only happen if we pass the housing element. The housing element and the affordable housing overlay will benefit seniors, families that currently live in Huntington Beach, that have been living in Huntington Beach for decades. Every day I get calls at work of seniors and families, single, single parents that can't find a place to live. And so with this affordable housing overlay, that will provide some sense of security for people that live currently in our city. And the concerns of, I think, I agree with all the comments that Mr. Commissioner Skandura mentioned. I do share the same sentiment, that there should be some kind of notice that residents within 500 feet, 1,000 feet, that would be discussed. Hopefully, we can discuss that with my colleagues. Receive some type of notice so that you all are aware, I believe in full transparency, that a project is going up in the surrounding area. At the very least, that you, at the very least, you all will know when a project is coming up, and you have a way to contact council, to contact staff, so that your concerns are addressed. With that being said, I will be in full support of the current housing element as it stands. And I look, I know Mr. Skandura has some suggestions, so maybe we can look.
Yeah, so before we do that, I also am in support of the housing element and do intend to support it. My concerns are the same as Commissioner Skandura and Commissioner Rodriguez about notification. I do want to make sure the community has adequate notice to participate in the process going forward for any development that is going to be put in place near your residences. My, one of my main concerns is if we don't approve the housing element, I think a lot of these issues are going to be resolved in the court system, and we're not going to have any local input into that process. And so I think that approving the housing element is extremely important to our community so that we can continue to have the discussion with the community on specific developments. And I'm far more concerned with seeing the specifics of specific developments that are proposed and evaluating against concrete facts. I, you know, I hear the same thing as Commissioner Skandura and Commissioner Rodriguez and others about, you know, constantly from people in the community, that their children are living with them or having to move away, not just move away, but move out of state or move far away where, you know, because they can't afford to live in Huntington Beach. And I think we need to make sure that teachers and firefighters and individuals performing vital services for our community can afford to live in the community. And so, you know, I think this is an important thing that we move forward on, and therefore I'll support it with some further discussion on how we make sure the community is properly notified. So any other? Commissioner Adam?
Yeah. I'm supportive of the city retaining control over their land uses. I'm not supportive of the state giving any ability for them to do it any more than they already are. And potentially issuing moratoriums on building permits would cause, which would cause significant impacts to the city. I'm supportive of the affordable zoning overlay that allows the property owner to ignore that overlay and develop to the existing zoning without any city pressure to do anything different. I will also be supporting the housing element, EIR-associated documents, but I am supportive of enhanced notifications to local residents, as discussed by other planning commissioners. That's it.
Okay. I'm trying to figure out how to move forward. So, oh, go ahead.
Thanks. I did, I did want to just, as we're getting ready to have a motion made, that the item that we addressed earlier regarding ZTA 22-006 on the Brindle-Thomas, that, that we had some kind of clarification that should, should the overlay be used? Frankly, if there's a, if the existing zoning is used, I don't think there's a lot of concerns. But if the overlay is used, we do want to address the concerns of the residents. And there was some wording that was used about, and forgive me, that I don't recall what it was. I think you said it.
Are you talking about like where they would take, like a project would take access? You know, would?
Something that, that it wouldn't, that there have to be steps, an approval process, a public hearing and so on. If, if that is, if that is used on that particular parcel.
If?
If, if, yeah, if the overlay is used on the, on the parcel, that there would be some steps to address concerns regarding, as it said in, about access to the arterial access and so on.
So you, what you would want to see is a change in that specific plan in the overlay that said that a future project pursuant to the overlay would need to take access from?
From Golden West, basically, not through, and it would not be going through established neighborhoods. Basically following the, the findings.
Okay, that would be up to the planning commission to.
That's what I'm asking, if we want to include that as part of the proposal.
So I, I have an alternate proposal, and maybe staff can advise on what's appropriate here. I don't want to presuppose what a development is going to look like and the specifics of that and impose an artificial requirement on it. And we don't know, you know, what the community is going to want, once we see a specific proposal for some development on that property. So I believe right now, it would not come to the planning commission to approve for, to extend the roadway, correct? In the current plan?
The current specific plan requires, the circulation plan of the, of the specific plan, since it's been adopted, includes a connection of Saddleback. So right now, Saddleback dead ends on the north and south. And the circulation plan for the specific plan shows a connection that basically goes through this property. So it becomes a through street. That would be required under the specific plan today, under the estate residential. Presumably, a project that's multifamily would be developed in a way that we would, I guess, assess what the access should be based on a specific project, even if a single-family residential project came through. We would still assess a project's access and where the points of entrance and exit were, based on the specific project proposals, whether it's single-family or multifamily. But the current circulation plan shows a through street. We would probably recommend some sort of language where access shall, you know, appropriate assessment of access based on the specific project would be analyzed as part of a development application or some language to that effect.
Okay. And any thoughts from other commissioners on that? I, I don't, I'm more in agreement with what she's proposing than what Commissioner Ray is proposing at this point. I could be open to multiple solutions to that as well. So I'm, I'm trying to gauge where some of the other commissioners fall in on this. Do you?
I would agree with you, Chair. I don't think we should be trying to put, put requirements into projects that aren't even on the table yet. I mean, this is all just merely speculation. I think, you know, the staff are going to be going through the site, if a project comes forward to them, the staff are going to be going through the site, site plan review process, and they're going to be determining what's the most appropriate access in and out of there. So, yeah, I don't think we need to be directing staff to do something that doesn't even exist.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay. Right. So please, hey, please. Okay. So what I was going to recommend was that if they propose a through street, that it come in front of the planning commission for us to review it, because right now, it doesn't require us to do that. So the only thing that we've talked about is notification to the community, but that, I'm not sure that provides enough of a process within the city to make sure that the community's on board with that.
So you're saying if a project includes through access, it would need to go to the planning commission for approval?
Correct.
I think we would be okay with that as long as it was the project's access and not the project in and of itself, because we have to, the only way that we're, we would gain certification from the state is that if the project itself, if it provides 20% affordable, is permitted by right. So it can't be a consideration of the project itself, but it could be maybe a plan for the through street could be reviewed by the planning commission, but not.
So under what circumstances? If it's not part of the project, under what circumstances would it be?
It would, but the planning commission's review would be limited to the through street proposal.
Oh, so we wouldn't be looking?
And not, you wouldn't be able to deny the project based on the project's access or proposal to do a through street, but you could review the access and make some recommendations or conditions or something to that effect.
Okay. I'm not recommending anything under those, those circumstances. So, okay. All right. So let's, let's talk about, let's move forward on discussing the notification issue. So the notification seems to be different depending on whether it's the, the development is going forward under the overlay or over the base zoning. So do any of the commissioners have any specific proposal on?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Skandura.
And just, you know, just as a caution, I'm sure the commissioners are all aware of this. I mean, we have to be very careful about making lots and lots of wholesale changes to this. We just can't be coming in here pulling out parcels and properties and areas as well as changing sections of this, because if we do, then it would have, first of all, that this, our, our new, our housing element would then have to go back to HCD for, for review. That's usually a 60-day review. It may not pass muster within it, that comes back with us. It just puts on more delay to the process, and we're already in jeopardy of, you know, some significant sanctions. So the changes I have, you know, are pretty, I mean, they're really more clarification than I think our notice requirement can also go within these sections. Now, I did propose some changes that I've circulated amongst all of you, and the reason I put it in here was because in the last study session, it was mentioned that all of the projects within the affordable housing overlay, if at least 20% of the units were affordable at the low and very low income levels, then it would afford minister, then they would be allowed ministerial review. Now, that's definitely something I support because, because we need housing badly in this city, and we can't allow these, this critical housing to be held up in public review processes and by sequence. processes and by secret challenges, especially from opposition groups and special interest groups. It's just too critical. We need the housing. And so, as you can see, when I, when I went back and, and looked at the housing element, I only found one vague mention of this, of this, of this allowance just in the very first paragraph on these, on these pages here. And it really had to do with the Beach Edinger corridor specific plan. So, what I've done is I've added some, I've added some changes, some inserts, just to clarify where this, where this approval would apply. So, the bottom, of course, the top paragraph applies to the whole affordable housing overlay, the bottom paragraph to, to also the affordable housing overlay. And then just a few, few words, just to, for instance, on page 4-14 middle paragraph, it says proposing lower-income units qualifies for density bonus and other development incentives. Well, it can also qualify for ministerial approval if it's, if 20% affordable housing is allowed. So, I've, I've added that. And then the same goes on the other two pages as, as well. These are, this is actually an appendix B. And I think it will make it very clear that the, that this ministerial approval will apply throughout the entire affordable housing overlay and not just the Beach Edinger corridor specific plan, because that's what I was really concerned about with this. And then somewhere in here, perhaps, and I, I think page 4-13 and 4-14, and probably B-12 and B-13 would be the most appropriate places, we need to put in here that any project that gains minister, for any project that gains ministerial approval, residents must be notified of that approval within 500 feet of the project. And 500 feet is one and a half football fields. I mean, those are the people that are most, the length of one and a half football field. So, those are the people that are going to be most, most affected by it, so at least they know the project is going in. So, that would be my proposal is these changes.
Commissioner Scandura, really quick on, on the changes that you just recommended, with the exception of the last one, I would recommend rather than putting it in the housing element, requesting it be inserted into the zoning text amendments for each of the overlays, so that it's in the code.
Actually, I did read the ordinances, the zoning text amendments, all of those, and it already has that stuff. The problem is it's not fully stated, fully elucidated here in the housing element, and that becomes the basis for the ordinances that we're also going to be recommending for city council. That's where I thought there was a weakness.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Those suggestions, I think, are fine. It's the last one about the notice?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, fine. Yeah, that, that would definitely have to be put in the zoning text amendment, but I, I think we can also still put it here in the, in the housing element as well, so it's clear to the public that we're at least going to notify the residents of a project that's going in.
500 feet into the homes.
So.
To the radial homes.
And it'd be 500 feet from the project boundary. Not 500 feet from the, present.
There are no homes within 500 feet. So, you're going to notify the horses?
Actually, there's quite a number, I've looked at the map, there's quite a number of homes that, that are within 500 feet of the South Coast Supply property.
You're not listening. No one in you got the message.
Okay, so, I guess we can take a straw vote on that proposal. Can you just restate it, John, so I make sure we're clear on what we're voting on?
Yeah. So, my proposal is, first of all, to insert the language that I've laid out in here into the specific places in these four pages. And we've got to remember, I think the whole housing element, including the appendices, is about 200 and some odd or 300 and some odd pages. It's crazy. It's a huge amount, so just these. And then require notice to residences within 500 feet of the, of a, of a project's boundaries of any ministerial approval.
Okay, those in favor of adding that in as a condition? Okay, all right. Okay, so are we ready to make a motion then? Can I ask you to go ahead and do that for us again, since you're?
Making motions for 13 and a half years, so this will, unless, you want to do it, Oscar? Okay. Actually, we're going to have, I think I'm going to break it down into three different motions, one relating to sequel action, the second relating to the housing element update, and then I'm going to ask staff, I mean, we've got, geez, seven different items. Well, we'll figure it out. So, my first motion would be to recommend approval of the subsequent EIR number 22-002 with findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations by approving the city council resolution 2022-63 and forward to city council for consideration.
Second?
I need to have that back on the, the yes/no screen. I hit another part of the screen. There we go. So, I'm a yes.
We have six ayes. Commissioner Mandick is absent. Motion passed us.
Any, any amendments that need to be proposed still?
Okay. So, my next motion would be to recommend approval of general plan amendment number 21-003, the housing element update, by approving the city council resolution number 2022-62 and forwarding to city council, oh, pardon me, with suggested, with the changes approved by the straw vote, and then forward that to the city council for consideration.
Second?
Sorry, who seconded it? Commissioner Mandick is absent. Motion carries.
Okay, and then the last one, this is, there's about seven different, seven different items, and do I need to read? Commissioner Ray had a question.
Yeah, I would like to, as far as, I would like us to address some individually, the ZTA's and so on.
Okay. Go ahead and do that then. So, first of all, recommend, motion to recommend approval of general plan amendment number 22-001. This is the general plan land use element affordable housing overlay and approve city council resolution.
Second? We have six ayes. Commissioner Mandick is absent. Motion passes.
Recommended, next one is to recommend approval of zoning map amendment number 22-002, which is zoning map affordable housing overlay, and by with findings and by approving draft ordinance number 4269.
I second.
We have six ayes. Commissioner Mandick is absent. Motion carries.
And then recommend, motion to recommend approval of zoning text amendment number 22-008. This is the Huntington Beach zoning and subdivision ordinance, chapter 229, affordable housing overlay with findings, by approving draft ordinance number 4272.
Second?
We have six ayes. Commissioner Mandick is absent. Motion carries.
Next one, recommend approval of zoning map amendment number 22-001, which is the RMH rezoning with findings and by approving draft ordinance number 4262, 4263, and 4264.
Second?
Commissioner Mandick is absent. Motion carries.
So, we got three more to go. Next one is to recommend approval of zoning text amendment number 22-009, the Beach Edinger corridor specific plan affordable housing overlay with findings and by approving draft city council resolution number 2022-59.
I'll second.
Hold on one second. We have six ayes. Commissioner Mandick is absent. Motion carries.
Just a question for the staff, and Jennifer, I know you suggested this, in the zoning text amendments for the notification, did I need to include that change in the, in there?
No, we, I mean, we as a staff can carry it forward too.
Okay. City council. All right. Next one, recommend, motion to recommend approval of zoning text amendment number 22-007. That's the Holly Seacleft specific plan affordable housing overlay with findings and by approving draft ordinance number 4271.
Second? Go ahead. Included, Commissioner Adam is the second.
We have six ayes. Commissioner Mandick is absent. Motion carries.
And then the last one, recommend approval of zoning text amendment number 22-006. This is the Ellis-Golden West specific plan RH overlay with findings and by approving draft ordinance 4265 and forward to city council for consideration.
I'll second.
Okay, we have five ayes. Commissioner Ray, no. Commissioner Mandick, absent. Motion carries.
Okay, I just want to make sure no additional amendments. We're good? Okay. All right, so that concludes the, our public hearing items, so we will move on to.
One thing, do we have to, staff, do you need to read about the appeals?
These are all legislative actions that'll require council approval, so that there's not an appeal process.
There's no appeal process, okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Ray.
Okay, so we will move on to the consent calendar, or do we have anything on the consent calendar?
We have no items for the consent calendar.
Okay, any non-public hearing items?
We have no non-public hearing items.
Planning items?
Just one quick announcement. At the last hearing, you guys considered the Belatera project. They were both legislative actions and then actually an approval of a site development review, which was appealable, and timely appeal was filed, and so both those legislative actions that you recommended, as well as the appeal of the site development review, will be considered at the November 1 city council meeting. And that's all I have this evening.
Chair Perkins, I just wanted to also add, as a staff, I wanted to acknowledge our city staff and our consultant team, Rita, Dave, and our, and our entire city staff, particularly Nicole O'Bay and Alyssa Matthews. They have done countless number of hours of work on this project. I also wanted to acknowledge the work of the planning commission. I mean, I saw many of you at the workshops dating back to a year and a half ago. We had new commissioners who jumped in. Throughout probably the last year and a half, we've received random emails, phone calls, questions about the housing element, and then you all had to sit through three back-to-back-to-back study sessions, four in total, and we, as a staff, have been noticing throughout the process how much work the planning commissioners were putting into understanding the material. It's very complicated, asked great questions at the study session, and we've all saw that, and I just wanted to pass on the acknowledgement to you. We appreciate your diligence in, in really putting in a lot of work on it, because it takes a lot of work on this side too. So, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for adding those comments. The amount of work is just incredible that went into this, and so I reiterate the thanks to the staff for all the time and effort that you put into this. The, the amount of detail and attention to detail was just awesome, so thank you. Okay, so, we now have planning commission items, so I will start with Commissioner Adam. Is there anything that you would like to mention?
No, I just, I want to acknowledge staff as well. Thank you, Jennifer, and everybody else who worked on it. Very timely responses, so thank you for all my questions. And I don't have anything else to report.
I also want to acknowledge staff on, I know it's a very difficult process to get a compliant housing element, and you guys have done a really excellent job. I also would like to state, to thank staff for organizing my going to the APA conference the other week, where I also learned more about housing elements and how difficult it is to, to get into compliance, so thank you for that.
Nothing further for me?
And I too want to thank the staff. It's, yeah, for us, I mean, we, planning commissioners all worked hard. Commissioner Mandick also worked very hard, and then at the last minute was told that it's best not, not to vote. For us, of course, are, well, and the other thing I was going to say, I mean, this was a very paperwork-intensive process, I think probably about 2,000 pages of paper. I don't know how many times I said if I see another piece of paper on this thing, I'm going to holler like crazy, you know, and almost did, I don't know how many other times. For us, you know, we're pretty much done with the housing element, but for the staff, I, you know, you guys have done a fantastic job, and the public doesn't see all the work that goes on, you know, the endless hours, the meetings, the, the writing that has to be done, the working with the consultants, and then, of course, having to deal with housing and community development, just that whole process of going back and forth and having, having once worked for a state agency, and technically I still do, you know, I do realize how state agencies can be very exacting in their comments and often difficult to, you know, going back and forth so that, that doesn't go unnoticed, and good luck to the staff in getting this through to the city council, and that's actually going to be the easy part. The implementation's going to be the hard part, so good luck to all of you.
Yeah, just, I share the same sentiment as other commissioners. Thank you for everything you do to provide the necessary feedback and the presentations that will allow us to understand, that allow us to understand really how complex the housing element is. I do want to thank staff also for allowing me to attend the American Planning Association Conference. It was definitely interesting to learn about transit, to learn about RENA, housing elements. It's definitely an eye-opening experience when you're sitting with other planning commissioners, with other folks from up and down the state and sometimes even the country. I've met folks from different parts of the country as well. So, I think we have a very unique planning commission, and I thank my colleagues for the opportunity to, to be with you all, so thank you.
And I also want to thank everyone for answering all the questions, and we now have to figure out what to do with all our time after, after going through all this. Also wanted to comment on my colleagues on the planning commission, that we had a lot of good discussions, and we did, even though, one thing I really like about this planning commission is, even though we don't always vote the same way and everything, the amount of respect that everyone treats one another with, I'm always appreciative of that, so that's all I have.
Yeah, for sure. I second that. Okay, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Huntington Planning Commission, Huntington Beach Planning Commission is Tuesday, October 25, 2022, at 6:00 PM in Council Chambers Civic Center, 2000 Main Street. That's here. So, they just want to make sure I'm being thorough, in case anyone was confused.
I have one question. Is there anticipated study session for the 27th, or is that to be determined?
We don't have, we don't anticipate any items for the next meeting, so it'll likely be canceled, and we'll be sending out a notice.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, so we are adjourned.